Afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting. It is 21st day of February 2023. Thank you all for being here this afternoon. We have quite a few people sign up to speak on a couple of the items, so we might as well move forward quickly. I hope everyone had a great last couple of weeks. And what am I looking for? I'm looking for our agenda. Here we are. Okay. So we'll start with business one. Discussion on extending the duration of the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Agency and providing direction to the Executive Director. Mr. City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioner. So we prepared a discussion to outline what those steps are as a request from some of the members of the board. Additionally, we want to talk about also the budget and how that impacts the allocations. And so Laura has also prepared a presentation, and they are going to talk about that now. Clarence will go first.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the Commission. Clarence Woods with the--
Hello, Clarence.
How you doing, sir?
The jacket.
Vice Mayor Thurman.
I just want you to know that Commissioner Beasley Pittman outdid you.
She's a lot prettier, too. So in reference to our item, the extension of, or the possible extension of the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights CRA. We, when we talk about the process of actually getting the CRA extended, there are a couple of things that need to happen. One of which, the first thing, is that there be a finding of necessity, a study that would look at the redevelopment area, survey all of the area to see what is still blighted. We still have a whole lot of blight left within the redevelopment area. There's a lot of work left to be done. And we need to inventory all of the blight and put it in a report along with any other conditions that need to be ameliorated or, you know, gotten rid of. So the finding of necessity is the first step towards moving forward and getting the extension of the redevelopment area. Once we have that finding of necessity in hand, we'll come back to the Board of Commissioners, you acting as the Board of Commissioners of the CRA. And Dwayne will probably speak more to the legal aspects of what will happen. But we bring back that finding of necessity. You guys would then approve us moving forward. And then it would, I would imagine, go to the City Commission because it's the City Commission that actually authorizes that action. And then over to Broward County for their approval now. What needs to be worked out is the fact that, you know, we have a partner in Broward County. And whether Broward County wants to continue to allow for their contribution to the TIF to continue to come to the Redevelopment Agency. We've been told, we have some ideas about whether or not that is something that they want to do. But I have been in contact with Ms. Lisa White over at the Housing Finance Authority. We have not yet made, we haven't had a conversation yet. But we want to talk to her about the county's willingness to continue. I did have some conversations with the guy who was there with, who was there in her position before he moved on. So I do have some understanding about the county's position. But we want to offer different options or alternatives to them, maybe not participating and putting all of their increment. But there are a number of different things that we can talk to them about and how they can participate with us and partner with us to continue to do the work and maybe not have all of their TIF, but, you know, possibly do some project-based TIFs on certain projects that we want to get done or a percentage of their TIF. A number of different options, way too many to name here. But after we get their approval, and their approval will either be by resolution or in a local agreement if they are going to continue their contribution to the TIF. And again, I think Dwayne and maybe Lynn will be able to speak a little more to the legal mechanisms. But once that happens, then we'll go back and we'll amend and restate our redevelopment plan. And from there, we can continue to do the work. I mean, that's, that's basically nuts and bolts of how procedurally, you know, we'll, we'll be able to extend.
Clarence, why is this necessary in light of the fact that the Commission already did move forward with establishing an agency to basically do the same work once the CRA sunsets?
Well, we don't want to confuse what that agency is capable of doing. This is necessary because it continues the funding in order to do the redevelopment of the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights CRA. That agency is just an agency that, it's a nonprofit that if we put money into it, then it can continue to do the work. But again, it's a nonprofit, and basically it'll have to eat what it kills. You know, it'll operate like a 501(c)(3).
But are we prohibited from utilizing whatever funds we find as a balance? Are we prohibited from moving those funds over to that agency?
I don't think so. I think just like any other agency that comes to us for resources to do development work, we can also make contributions to that agency, which--
See, I guess I'm just wondering, I guess I'm just concerned about any kind of redundancy here or if we're going to be duplicating efforts. I'm not clear yet on whether we would be. Or, I mean, if I could feel that there was a comfort level with regards to continuing the work, continuing the projects, continuing utilization of the funds, then I'm good. But I, I'm just wondering if we're trying to duplicate what we already have in place because we knew, we knew that the CRA was going to sunset.
Yes.
And we had started to make those kinds of provisions for that a few years ago.
Yes.
So where are we with that?
So the nonprofit or the Economic Development Corporation, we are established. We are waiting on our 501(c)(3) status back from the federal government. We do have a board. We need one more member. One member had to fall out. But we need to fill out the board and get our 501(c)(3). We've been meeting with the board, and we're establishing our work program. All of those, that is moving and is moving as it, as it had, as we had envisioned it.
But what does that mean? But to answer his question, what is "as we envision it"? What does that mean? We thought it, we thought it was going to pick up where the CRA left off. Is that the same mission that was intended, was envisioned for this particular 501(c)(3)?
Yes, it, it still is. It's the vision to carry on redevelopment activities where it actually has the funds to be able to do so. But I think there is a distinction with the 501(c)(3) or the nonprofit. The idea for that 501(c)(3) is to be a community development-driven nonprofit. And by that, what I mean by that is, is that it undertakes community development activities from a, from a bottom-up approach instead of top-down approach with--
And, and it's sort of, it's sort of a grassroots--
Yes.
--community-based undertaking, and it would derive its funds through, through that channel rather than-- I get, we get that because we no longer have the tax increment that we would anticipate with the CRA program. But, but the question is, can this organism, can this new entity function the same way as a CRA? Or does it have more functions than the CRA is capable of?
I was about to get to that.
Okay. And can, can the tax increment that you're, that we're talking about, be, can that money be used to fund the entity as opposed to continuing with the CRA?
So yes, again, the CRA can provide resources to that 501(c)(3). So yes, again, the CRA can provide resources to that 501(c)(3).
I would disagree.
Absolutely can. The, the, what's that? The difference is, you remember, the CRA is prohibited from doing any socially benefiting programs. That 501(c)(3) would not have that same restriction. One of the things that we, we had always looked to try and bring in-house with the CRA is we wanted to get a grant writer that would help, you know, write grants to go out and find funds to leverage CRA funds. I just, you know, really good grant writers, you know, don't want to have a job. They'd rather just, you know, get a piece of whatever grant that they actually write. The nonprofit or our 501(c)(3) will be active, and we mentioned this to you, will be active in finding foundations, other endowments and things like that, trying to bring money into the redevelopment area so that it could do some of the things, again, that the CRA can't do. We want to create the CDFI Fund, which is a government program that would allow for the nonprofit to be able to give funding, to give small business loans. All of these different things in order to help, you know, some of the small businesses within the redevelopment area. All of these things the CRA doesn't do, is not prepared to do, and is not capable of doing.
So, Dwayne Spence, interim City Attorney, I just have to make some, a clarification with regards to the Redevelopment Trust Fund associated with the Community Redevelopment Agency. At the end of the life of that agency, those funds, if they have not been expended in redevelopment activity within the CRA, have to be returned to the various taxing authorities from which that tax increment financing has come from. I haven't had an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Woods to speak with him more about how he envisions projects being transferred to this new entity, but with regards to how the statutes is set up, those funds at the end of the life of the CRA have to already be expended for redevelopment projects or have gone back, so not available to transfer to another entity.
That is another issue. That's important. I agree with you. Certainly, we're not going to leave any money on the table at the end of...
Right, right. Exactly, exactly.
And that's another issue when we talked about, you know, some of the projects that we approved, like, are they taking place? Are they not taking place? Let's get that money back and bring it, and make it available for folks that have other projects that hopefully will be more viable. But, but I did not realize, now that I've seen the numbers, I mean, I can't believe how much money is accumulated on this. I mean, just in the last six years, if we can, if 2023 proves to be successful as it appears to be, almost $100 million. And that doesn't include the other 20 years or so that, that funds were accrued and spent. So this has been a very successful program. I agree with you. There's, there's still need in the Northwest, and there's still need, you know, throughout the CRA, to continue to try to incentivize development and construction. But the question, the question is, you know, where, what happens if the county doesn't want to pitch in? What happens if the school board doesn't want to participate? Then we're just going to be relying upon the city's increment to be able to go forward, correct?
Yes, it would operate just like the central city CRA.
Right.
And the reason that had to happen was because there was no desire on behalf of those other entities to do any of this work. They've been trying to phase these CRAs out for years.
They're not, they're not...
So I don't, I, that's why I don't want us to go down a path where we're going to try to duplicate what we've already put into place to pick up the slack, but then again, obviously, I don't want to leave any money on the table either, but that's why I just wanted to try to get more information about what are we, are we going to be just hitting our head against the wall here going forward? Because we saw what happened with the central city CRA, and the only thing that's happening with the central city CRA is what we contribute as a city.
Also, in regards to that, adding to the conversation, there is yet so much that needs to be done yet in the Northwest section, also in the Progresso Flagler area. So if there's an opportunity where we can go in and request this extension, and if they're not, if the county is not on board, or the other entities are not on board, I believe we as a city should be able to have that conversation and continue to get rid of the slum and the blight that is in the Northwest section, because it's still there. And even with the funds that are being generated, there's still funds that are needed to make a difference.
So there's that. And then, and John, Commissioner Herbst, maybe you can help us out.
Yep, thank you.
So on one of these pages, it talks about the general fund impact of extension. I know that when you were serving the city, there had been a lot of discussions about the 10 years going forward, and, and were we really relying upon the return of this tax increment money to be put back into our city budget in order to make our budget viable in the years ahead?
So early on, we had had discussions, and let's, let's look at this in phases, if you will, too, because I think it's important to differentiate when we were getting to the end of life with the beach area of the CRA.
Right.
We had approached the county about potentially extending that, and their argument to us, and it was hard to refute, is that it was mission accomplished at the beach. We were hard-pressed to say when we had a St. Regis and a Ritz-Carlton and so forth, that we still had slum and blight at the beach. And while there may have been a project here or there that would have benefited from ongoing participation, in general, we'd no longer had slum and blight at the beach. I don't think we can declare mission accomplished in Northwest Progresso. We are getting to the point where we're now developing that momentum, which we were starting to develop years ago, and then the recession hit and kind of pulled the rug out from underneath it. That really slowed down the Northwest area. I think we probably would stand a better chance in having that conversation with the county with respect to this area, because I think everybody recognizes there's still a lot of work to be done. We're making progress, but we're far from finished. And so when we were doing our financial projections, we always assumed that the beach money would come back to us. I don't know that that's necessarily the case with Northwest Progresso. That might have been built into the projections that Stan Tech did, but I think there's a larger issue at work here, and again, is that if we get the county's money, that to me is, is, is an added bonus. But I think if we keep the CRA in place, we keep the city's TIF going into that district. And I think we need to honor the commitment that we've made to that entire area to continue to invest and reinvest, because I would say we're not done yet. We have a long way to go. We're starting to push down to the western end of the corridor, but there's still a lot of work to be done over there, and I think keeping the city's money in that is very important. And I think the CRA is a good mechanism for ensuring that we continue to fund it. If, for example, we were to contribute a portion of the city's tax revenue over to the Economic Development Corporation, we would have to budget that every single year. We'd have to make that decision every single year, and would be subject to the determination of that commission at that time.
Right.
If we keep the CRA in place, that's an obligation that we can't ignore. It's, it's built into it. So it's, it's no longer subject to an annual appropriation. It can't be undone. I think it's a commitment that we make to the community.
And it also gives us an opportunity to expand the boundaries, too, if we chose to.
Absolutely. And that's been one of the things that we've done when we've talked to the county about this, is we're, we're restricted on where we can do it, because it incorporates the, the County Hospital District and Children's Services Council. If we're going to restrict this to just city funds, then we have an opportunity to expand the boundary of that area to maybe capture some of the adjacent neighborhoods that weren't caught up in it the first time. That might benefit from it.
Right. Okay, so Greg.
Yes.
Were we anticipating any of these funds to, as we're budgeting in years ahead? I mean, I want to know what the purpose of this particular slide was.
Sure. So, so we had a presentation presented by, or developed by Laura, so that she can give you an idea of what the CRA has achieved in the past years, and also what, what was the, the thought behind the sunsetting of the CRA? Once the CRA ended, where some of these funds would be going to? And so Laura will be talking about that now.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Laura Reese. I just provided a little bit of an overview of how a TIF is calculated for the good of the public, or those of you who may need a little refresher, but the spoiler alert answer is yes. So when we come to you every year in June and do our 10-year projection, we showed in prior years the beach TIF going away, the transfer to the beach, and then in 2025, we've modeled the transfer out to Northwest going away as that sunsets as well.
So are you, are you, were you factoring in the, the sudden inflow of money from the CRA taxable value as part of your funding projections for the future of the city?
Yes, that was one of the key assumptions that were outlined when we presented in the prior, you know, three or four years to you all.
And where does that kick in, 2025?
2025, I believe, yes. So how the TIF is calculated, as a quick reminder, is the base year is 1995. At that year, the value in that area, the taxable value, was 208 million. In 2023, the property appraiser gave us the taxable value for that area, and it was around $2.4 billion. So the increase in that area over that time was $2.1 billion. And so we take that difference, or the increase in value, and we apply our millage rate to that, which is 4.1193 over the past 10 years. And then we, we transfer an amount equivalent to 95% of that each year. So all the revenue comes into the general fund, and then there's a transfer out to Northwest, and the amount will be $8,405,000 this year.
And Mayor, I think that's, I'm sorry, Mayor, and I just want to thank you, Laura. I appreciate that. And that's why I think it's important that we start having this conversation several years before we get to the sunset date, because if there, if there's going to be a need for them to update their long-range planning, the earlier that we give them that policy direction, the earlier they can build that into the assumptions that they've got going forward.
So I'm looking at, I'm looking at this spreadsheet, and for 2024, if we anticipate, if we anticipate just a 7% growth rate in our taxable value, we're looking at a $6, 6.72, $6.72 cent...
That's millions.
Million.
Yeah, $7 million deficit.
$6,720,000 deficit.
Yes.
And then in the year 2025, a $10 million deficit, and it goes...
Right. And that's based on a variety of assumptions plugged in, like assumptions for growth in wages, growth in benefits, growth, 7% growth in property taxes, if all of those assumptions come true.
So you're taking a conservative approach, a 7% in the next, in this fiscal year?
We hope that's conservative.
So that 7%, anything over 7% would be...
Yep.
All right, I get it.
And no change in millage?
Right.
So basically going in perpetuity with no change in millage?
Okay.
Right. So just to sort of quickly go through, we did a six-year summary. We can pull up to 10, I believe, without going into our old files, but over the last five years in the 2023 budget, which is based upon the property tax information, around 90, 91.5 million, or 91,500,000 will have been expended by the Northwest Progresso on their project.
It will be expended, or is it available to spend?
Well, it's appropriated for those purposes. Once it's encumbered, it rolls from year to year. It, it has to be committed to a project at the end of the fiscal year.
Right, right, okay.
And then this kind of shows visually that a lot of the growth has happened over the past few years. We went from $10 million in receipts in 2018 all the way to 23.8 million in 2023 budget, so the growth has happened quickly. And just some considerations as you have this discussion, the increased growth in the CRA area also typically leads to an increase in demand for services, as, you know, Flagler Village has new apartment complexes, new businesses. We need to service those areas with public safety. We need to provide park services and all of that for the past 20-plus years. And moving forward, we're not able to do that under the current TIF model. We're limited to not providing government services using those increases. Another issue is we, as you all discussed, contributing partners based upon history are probably unlikely to support funding their piece moving forward, and if you look back here, the county's a big part of that. The county is actually contributing more than the city at this point. CRA rules, they limit the flexibility of how and where the city can use the funds, and the City Commission can, as you discussed, establish another mechanism to target any priorities you may have within the CRA or beyond those borders. And then again, this is our 10-year forecast, where we incorporated the transfer to the Northwest going away in '25. And if we were to update this, as John said, we have some room to prepare for that and change our assumptions, but this is what it looks like before the change in assumptions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of Laura? Okay, there being none. What's, what's, what are our next steps? This is just a...
And one more comment I would make to Mayor, because I think this is very important for those of us who have, like yourself, have been involved with the CRA for quite a long period of time. If you look at, back at the history of the Northwest Progresso CRA, much of the early work that we did was concentrated in Flagler Village.
Right.
So we made tremendous progress in Flagler Village. We, we put most of our early money into the projects, like Soleil, Peter Feldman Park, several million dollars went into that. We put money into Alan Hooper's project.
The park, park, wasn't that the bond, bond money from the county?
No, that was the CRA. The CRA money was used to...
For Peter Feldman?
For Peter Feldman Park, yeah. Because I remember there was a lot of debate about it at the time. It was, it was, it was questionable.
All right.
In fact, it was a bifurcated purchase for part of the, part of the parcel was purchased with CRA funds, and part of the parcel was other funds, yeah. But, so we made a lot of investment in that part, and we saw huge impact. We started seeing projects like Bamboo Flats and things like that, market-rate projects come in there. And I think we could say we, we had great success. We put, we put money into the Trammell Crowe Project, Henry Square, all that area was all funded with CRA dollars that went into infrastructure work and so forth, as you may recall. And all those projects did great. They sold for $100 and $150 million respectively when they went back to market, and it's that TIF dollars that are now coming back and going west of the tracks. So we, the first 10-plus years went into the Flagler Village area, and now it's time to take the benefit of what we got from that early investment and put it back into west of the tracks, which we candidly did not work on during that early period of time in the CRA. So we started making progress about 10 years ago, when we did the Streetscape project over there. As you recall, we put $15 million into that, and then we started doing some of these other big projects like 613 and so forth. So I think we're seeing the, we're, we're reaping the benefits of the work we did in Flagler Village, but now we have to plant those seeds in the rest of the, the area over there.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, there being none? Thank you. Yes, sir.
So Mayor, I mean, at this point, we have established a process for sunsetting CRA. We, we've shared that with you. If there are any other directions for, for staff?
I think, I think the Commission has inquired whether or not the county has any appetite to continue, so we have to, we can speculate what their answer is going to be, but if we can just get an actual response, have we ever asked them?
We will follow up on that. We haven't asked the current county administrator.
Right.
We will have that conversation and then get a formal response.
Okay. I think that's important. And, and I think then, and then I guess we still need to be mindful of the projects that we have given money in the CRA, and what the progress of those projects are, and the viability of some of them. And like we said, we don't want to leave money on the table. We don't want to see projects being approved, not being, and the money not being spent, and then the, the CRA expires, and, you know, the county's going to say, well, we want that money because you haven't used it yet.
Right. And for that, we're giving quarterly reports to the, to the board, so that you all can see the progress, and we can also make any, you all can make any, any requests or determinations of shifting direction at any given point.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I may, so City Manager, I think we do need to get really aggressive with the timeline, maybe even more than just every quarter, because this is going to sunset in 2025, correct?
Yes.
So that, that's going to be here before you know it. And I'm also concerned with, I want to make sure that, so that we do not leave money on the table, that we are able to, if we do not get an extension on the CRA, and again, I'm not convinced that we need to, but if we don't, I want to make sure that we're able to take the funds that we still have and transfer them over to that Economic Development Corporation that we've formed. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think we've already all apply, appointed people to that board as well, Clarence?
Clarence.
So I mean, I guess, I just want to remind everyone that we've been preparing for this day. This isn't just a shock that all of a sudden this CRA is going to sunset, and we need to make sure that that new Economic Development Corporation is up to speed. We have to make sure that it's ready to hit the ground running, and we have to make sure that it's going to do everything that we need to do to alleviate the, the blight conditions that we find slow remaining. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, and Mr. Spence, you're going, excuse me just a second. Mr. Spence, you're going to find out... Mr. Spence, you're going to find out the legality of being able to transfer any remaining funds from the CRA into this entity, correct?
Yes, sir, we will.
Yes, okay, sorry.
And I just wanted to add, I would like for us to not close an opportunity of what could happen, understanding we do have in place the nonprofit, but also, again, if there's an opportunity and the probability of extending this, I think we should look at it. It gives another opportunity. If there's a, if there's two ways to do this, let's make it grand. Let's not just stop at the door because it's sunsetting. If there's an opportunity to pursue that extension, let's do it. Let's be aggressive about that as well.
Very good. Okay, moving on to business two, discussion regarding the alarm response fee revenue allocations. I believe Commissioner Beasley-Pitman, you had requested this. Mr. City Manager, you have a report?
Yes, staff is available to present the mechanisms behind alarm fees, and Laura is going to talk those details through with you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioner Laura Reese again. In response to a few questions that were asked when Fire and Finance brought forward a change in the ordinance related to collections for the alarm response fee, OMB partnered with Fire and Police to kind of put together a summary presentation for you all, so that you could have a discussion on the topic. So we'll be talking really quickly about the basis of authorization for the fee, some history on the alarm fee, alarm fees process, financial history, and allow you all to have some discussion and provide us with direction if needed. So local governments are really limited on how we can raise revenue by the state constitution, with the exception of ad valorem tax and statutorily authorized home rule revenue sources. We're dependent on the Florida Legislature for authority. So this fee falls into a home rule authority. It's a regulatory fee. Another question that was asked, and so really the regulatory fees, what's key about them is they should not exceed the regulated activity's cost, and they're generally required to be applied solely to the regulated activity. So in this case, we can't charge more than our costs to respond to an alarm, and the fee that we charge needs to be applied towards paying for the folks who are responding to the alarm. That's the concept there. The second concept is about setting up a separate fund. Because all of the expenses and revenues for this function are in the general fund, governmental principals would recommend that we keep it in the general fund unless there's a specific purpose to break it out. Here's, says, "Alarm service fees have been a part of the city's code of ordinance, based on staff research since the 1980s. In 2010, the city updated the fee, and it's still only a partial cost reimbursement, but it's intended to recover a portion of the cost. It's not considered punitive, which is a fine, and so we don't have an appeals process for it. Through, in actual cases of incidents, the fee is waived if there's an actual emergency." So based upon information provided by Public Safety, if a residential or non-residential alarm is triggered, the Public Safety, so police or fire, will respond to the fee. And if the alarm is caused by an identifiable response type, and I think that was the question, so if you show up and there's a fire, or somebody's broken into a home, that fee is waived. So they change, they reclassified the alarm, and it doesn't count against the person or the business. Any questions on that process? Okay. So this is the fee structure. The first response is nothing. They get a freebie if they show up and nothing's happening. On the second response, residential, $75, non-residential, $125 for police, and fire is $225 and $413.
This is per year?
Per incident, per call. So the second time the police show up and your alarm went off and nobody's there...
But per year?
Yeah, 12 months it restarts.
For 12 months, right.
For 12 months it restarts.
And Laura, again, in regards to the figure for the plus six, is that the correct figure?
So I followed up with the police department, and although we looked at the history of how the fee was developed, nobody could figure out why it went down at number six. So we might need to do some more history, but the cost of service wouldn't go down, so there was some logic. I don't know what it was. Do you, John? Go ahead, John, sorry, Commissioner Herb Snouse.
Yeah, that came out of the audit that we did. So when we were trying to develop the new fee structure, we reached a certain point of diminishing returns, because what we've had is occasionally buildings will go off 30, 40 times in a row. And so we didn't want to get to a number that was just absurdly high. So the whole idea with this, like with all of our code enforcement fines, is to encourage people to address the problem that we were experiencing, where folks were not fixing their alarms. So at a certain level, it becomes punitive, and to a level that we didn't think was appropriate.
So, go ahead.
This is strictly alarms, not 911, strictly alarms.
Alarms, so it's alarms triggered that then result in a response.
So if this is not punitive, then why does it jump from $225 to $425 between the fourth and fifth response for non-residential?
So the full cost of service is higher than, so we're trying to encourage them to address the issue.
That's not, that's not the right answer.
I'm assuming that we're trying to get them...
Cost of service doesn't change between the third and the fourth and the fourth and the fifth. It's the same as the first.
So we're not, we're not at full cost of service?
Right, we get to full cost recovery by the repeated offenders. So at the earlier ones, we're giving them a break on the cost. By the time, if we have multiple offenders, multiple offenses from the same offender, we start hitting them for full cost. So the earlier, the lower charges are not full cost recovery.
So those are not full recovery costs?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
So it was developed on a partial cost of service methodology, allowing us to escalate it as folks weren't addressing their alarm issues.
So in the sixth, so the sixth, never mind, I won't beat a dead horse.
Okay. So, and this is the fee collections for police and fire. We've coded fire in red, like their vehicles, and police in blue. So the total amount collected in 2018 was 721,000, and that went down to 488,522,22. We think it's related to new technology trends, where they provided residents and businesses with greater control over their alarms, the ability to say, no, that was my cat, or I, yeah, my neighbor walked in. There's more technology that allows us to address those before folks, or before our police and fire have to respond, and residents can review alarms from their phones and filter them out. So the trend is, we expect the trend to continue to go down for revenues. And so this kind of just shows you revenues and expenses for the police department. We don't have them in a separate fund, because they don't collect revenues to support their, we have them in the general fund, because they don't collect sufficient revenues to support their operations. So they're largely funded through...
Define revenues. How is the fire department in moving forward, the fire and police, how do they generate revenue?
Yeah, again, so it goes back to what the state authorizes. A large portion of what the police department brings in is related to tickets they write, so traffic citations, items like that. It's really limited. They can't charge for helping, you know, a homeless person to identify, you know, services or things like that. So the state doesn't allow us to do that. For fire, they're allowed to, we're allowed to charge for a lot more. So our fire assessment fee is a good example. We try to go to full cost recovery for fire assessment. That allows us to assess properties for the benefit of providing fire suppression services. So that's a really large revenue. Another example is the fire inspection fees. So for our large, our businesses, fire inspectors are required to inspect every year to make sure that they have safe businesses and safe fire practices. We get to charge up to full cost recovery for those services. And another example is EMS response. So we can bill medical providers, like insurances, Medicare and Medicaid. So they're able to recover for a lot more, based upon state law.
Mayor, I can give you a little more background on this, by the way, so I just pulled up my emails, because I have every one going back to 2006.
Okay.
On November 25th of 2008, we had a discussion on this, and this is how we determined all of this. So in order to remain as a valid fee, the fee schedule can't exceed the reasonable cost of providing the service. The use of the graduated schedule is appropriate, but only up to the level of the actual cost of services. Any charges in excess of the cost of services would then be a punitive fine or an illegal tax. Let's see, we also talked about the fee schedule being revisited on a frequent basis to account for increasing costs, and to achieve the desired policy goal of reducing unnecessary false alarm responses. The use of the graduated fee was appropriate, but if we get to the level of a fine, that now carries an obligation for a hearing, and then we'd have to go through the code enforcement magistrate process. So we stopped and we capped it at the actual cost recovery, and we didn't go above that. That's why it doesn't keep increasing into perpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions for me before you all?
Can I ask a couple very quick ones?
Absolutely.
Number one, EMS fee, you said Medicare, Medicaid insured, do we still charge a fee for uninsured or indigent patients, why not for EMS?
So I know we get, we're in a partnership with the state. I don't know if anyone from Fire is here to respond on...
Chief Golan?
On the fee. So we, it's not an EMS fee, it's like a fee for service, so we don't charge it on the tax bill. We charge it as part of an insurance billing or a billing to individuals.
I think it's just for transportation, not for EMS itself.
That's correct.
Okay, for everybody, or just ones that are insured?
Just transported, and it's for everybody, however...
Wait, 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 speak in the microphone, great.
Good afternoon, Stephen Golan, Fire Chief. So you are correct, Vice Mayor, it is in response to our transport fees. There's a difference in that fee between the level of service that's provided to them. It is charged across the board, however, the recovery isn't as successful when it's not Medicare or Medicaid.
Okay, great. And Laura, can I ask you one other question, too?
Thank you.
Regarding, you said the fees have gone down because people are, you know, better technology, they could, homeowner could filter out the false alarms. If an alarm is triggered, and a unit has started to send, and the homeowner cancels it, at what point do they not get charged? Is it before arrival, or before the unit's dispatched, or you don't know how that goes?
Did you guys talk about that? So Keith, who did the analysis, said they hadn't discussed that in their analysis, so I don't know about the nuance, if they don't actually make it to the location and get called off.
That's fine.
Sorry, we can look at that for you.
Vice Mayor, can you repeat your question again? Is it for police or fire?
Well, either one. In other words, if you do a 911, you say that numbers have gone down because of better technology, that, you know, the homeowner could, you know, monitor it and then cancel the call. Are they still charged if they cancel the call, or at what point are they charged for a false alarm?
So residential, they're able to cancel the call, and fire does not respond out after that. In a commercial structure, because of the other things that could be taking place, whether it be arson or something like that, we still send a unit out to do a reset on all of those. If on a residential, they're canceled en route, there's no fee associated with it. On a commercial, they're charged for the unit going arrival.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any difference for police chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. First of all, just to clarify, you asked about 911, and there's a distinction between calling 911 and automatic alarm response. So with the alarm, generally speaking, if a person calls back and cancels, then there wouldn't be a response and presumably not a fee. However, there are circumstances where if a person calls back and cancels, and they don't have a cancellation code, or the supervisor feels something might be inappropriate, we'll still send an officer anyway.
And some of these alarm companies have gotten more sophisticated, where, I know my alarm company has, instead of calling to verify whether there's still an emergency, they'll text you, and you can, you can be more, it's a quicker process. You don't have to go through the whole dialing system and wait for someone to pick up on the call. You can immediately cancel it, and that way it prevents the, it prevents the police or fire department from having to show up. But 911 is a different scenario altogether.
Okay.
Any other further questions? Laura, anything else you want to add? Chiefs, chief? You were good, okay.
Well, I, if we're ready for discussion.
So now, this follow-up.
Okay. I did ask for this presentation, and I had the questions, because when I, we had the discussion about implementing the recovery of these funds, I said, instead of allowing it go to the general fund, let's allocate it to a specific fund. And as Laura in her presentation indicated, if we are able to identify a specific fund, it may qualify. Is that what I, it was on page five, a special fund or a specific fund?
Yes, but it, so the concept there is that the cost for providing the service would also go into that fund?
Mm-hmm.
And so since we're not at 100% cost recovery, you wouldn't, in this case, choose that option?
Okay.
So it's typically when you have a revenue that supports a service, that it recovers the full cost, is when you would choose that.
It sounds to me like we don't even cover our costs.
We do not.
So there is no real cost recovery, there's a deficit?
Correct. And so when we set up specific funds, it would be like for the stormwater or water sewer, where we're recovering the full cost of providing the service. We put the revenue in the fund, and then you pay for the service out of that fund.
Okay. So for clarity, what I'm hearing, being that we are not recovering 100%...
We're not.
We cannot allocate these funds, is that what I'm hearing?
That's our understanding of the principle, and that's sort of what Commissioner Herb reiterated, too, that it's a regulatory fee, so you would need to use it to pay for the cost of services.
Okay, because the desire, just for the, to have the conversation a little further, those funds, I was seeing it being allocated, allocate, excuse me, for police training as well as fire training, because we are short in manpower. With the manpower, when we increase, we need trainers for it. So to me, that would have been an ideal place to park those funds. So is there any way, City Commissioner, that, other than what Laura is explaining, that I'm not aware of, that could be brought to this conversation, so we can see how we can make that happen?
Right, Commissioner, no, we understand your desire and want to make sure that we have ample training. What we want to say is that this revenue is very variable, and as you can see from the trend, it's diminishing. We are taking the funds received here and put it into the general fund, which goes back into police use via the general fund. We can fund training, and we just want to make sure that as we develop the budget for '23, '24, that we have ample training, and we can certainly propose that in the upcoming budget. But being, or setting up a fund, again, it's not, it's not something that would qualify under the state statutes for this, but we can certainly find ways to be as close as possible, or scale the training appropriately to what is received on a prior year. So we will be proposing ample training for both fire and police for upcoming fiscal year.
City Manager, isn't training part of the contracts?
There are details about hours of use for training. Someone help me out here?
We budget for a police academy at a certain rate, but the chief will speak about anything.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may? Laura, a quick question, Laura.
Budget numbers in the contract?
I'm sorry, Chief, if I may before that. So Laura, just so I'm clear, based on my recollection, we don't budget for this because we don't, and we don't know what the anticipated amount is going to be. We take it into revenue when it comes in, or are you budgeting this in your annual budget?
We include alarm billing in our annual revenue. Did we have it in the presentation?
I thought we did.
It's around a half a million dollars a year, order of magnitude, is what we include, and it's based upon historic trends and where we're moving.
So what we could do, Commissioner Beasley-Pitman, is, right now, they are including that as part of their overall annual budget. So it is one of the many streams of revenue that come in. It all goes into one big pot. If, as a policy direction from the commission to staff, we want to say, don't budget that revenue, and when it comes in, we could appropriate it specifically for training, we could always do that. We have that option. So there are often revenues that are received where it's either... So there are often revenues that are received where it's either difficult to predict those revenues at the beginning of the year, so we don't budget for them. When they come in, we can then appropriate them. So if that's something that the Commission wants to direct staff to do, we don't budget that half million dollars as part of the general budget. When funds are received, we can then go back and appropriate that. We always amend our budgets every month and sometimes it's to reflect revenue that was received in excess of what was budgeted and so we always have that option. That's a policy decision.
But Commissioner, let me ask you something though, wouldn't that take away money from operations if this, if they're saying that the level of, the level of the charge is reflective of the actual cost that the city incurs in order to respond to these, to these emergency calls? If we drain that money away from operations and put it into a different category, how do we make up for the difference that we're now...
Well, we don't actually drain it away, so it's helpful not to think of our budget in a departmental fashion where particular revenues fund particular operations. We have multiple sources of revenue that go into one big pot.
I get that.
And then all the departments are funded out of that one big pot. So what we're merely saying is that this is one of the general fund revenues available for any valid municipal purpose that we're not going to budget in advance. So if there are costs, whether they come from the Police Department or the Parks Department or, you know, the City Manager's Office or what have you, that aren't being covered, then the City Manager, through his budget director, will find other sources of revenue so that the total in versus the, equals the total out. So if we simply direct staff to not budget this particular revenue, they'll find other sources or they'll cut expenses or do whatever they need to do to balance the budget.
Well, that's the point though. I mean, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Assistant interim City Attorney, Dwayne Spence. Our concern on the legal side is that we view this as a regulatory fee and if it's not treated as such, meaning that the revenue generated from the alarm fee is actually used for the purposes of the services provided, that it would be viewed as a legal tax as you alluded to earlier. So I'm not sure that you can actually appropriate it for other services.
Within the same department though, so it's part of the, so when we, when we determine the amount that we're going to build into the fee structure, we've done a cost study. That cost study incorporates all the costs associated with either the Fire Department going out there or a police officer going out there with a particular alarm thing. So this is one of the things then that gets built into the overhead cost. So Paul Vandenberg, for example, does it with the Fire Department. He has a very extensive spreadsheet that captures the direct costs of salaries and benefits as well as the indirect overhead operating costs of the department.
So that is, that has already been considered as a cost study?
We've done these cost studies going back for decades, yeah. And we update these cost studies periodically. I know Paul, like I said, Paul Vandenberg has done them in the past for Fire. I don't know who's currently doing them for PD, but I would suggest that training is one of the overhead costs that is part of that fee structure, at least it should be.
Probably not a half a million worth though.
I'm sorry?
It's probably not equivalent to a half a million dollars.
Right, but I think what, I think what Commissioner Beasley-Pitman is suggesting that we increase training to that level, so it is recovered then as part of the cost. So again, that's part of the cost of the department. That's an operating cost of the department.
A half a million dollars for training that relates to alarm response?
No, a half million dollars, so the current costs that are baked into the cost recovery is the total cost of the department.
Department, right.
Right, so it's the total cost of department. So if we're increasing the cost of training in the department, that's part of the overhead for the department, it's still cost recovery for the department. Because it's one of the costs of the department.
But we could only recover for the proportion related to the alarm billing and the alarm billing fee?
Well, but if we back up and we look at how that alarm response cost is determined, it's based on so much per hour, you know, so if it takes 15 minutes for the officer to respond, we look at 15 minutes of their time, that 15 minutes of their time includes their actual salary plus all the overhead costs of the department, which include all the training that we do. So it's not training specifically related to alarm responses, it's the totality of overhead costs that we then load into the salary. So you've got salary plus burden, right? So this is part of the burden that gets loaded in as part of the overall cost structure.
So I think we could find a way to get there.
I think we can get there.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I wanted to propose.
Yeah, I think we could navigate that.
Budgeting 111.
Right.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman, we hear you loud and clear. We want to see how we can increase training. We'll find a way, one that is legally acceptable and one that also concurs with our auditor because we want to be in compliance with all details. All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Good job, sir. It's your moment, man. He's done.
This is Michael.
Can you put your, your mic is not on.
The one thing I was thinking about when we were talking about that is, is when you budget something, you know, you don't want it to run into a deficit, so you want that budget to have a, you know, close to what your expenditures are, but I understand you make budget adjustments, but initially I think you're looking to try to capture your expenditures to offset your revenues with your expenditures. I mean, that's how I look at it when you're budgeting.
We'll work on this together. Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, so on to business three, Melrose Park Neighborhood Street Lighting Project. Once again, we're revisiting this.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Omar Castellan, Assistant Director, Public Works Engineering. Going to be talking about the new streetlights for Melrose Park.
Quite a few people signed up to speak on this.
I'm going to be talking about, oh, okay, I'm just going to be talking about overall project description.
So let me ask you this before you begin. What's the genesis of this project? Who asked for it? Where did it come from? How did it make its way through the process? And now we're here today and I have a stack of names here and I can tell you, most of them don't want this. So what, what was the, it probably predated your being here in the city, but to the best of your knowledge, what is your understanding of how this whole process began?
And I have the history of the project that I'm going to be talking about here, so I have step by step how this went along. So, yeah, so history.
Omar?
Yeah.
Is this presentation any different than what we saw a year ago? It's the exact same thing. It's the exact same presentation we saw a year ago?
Yeah.
So I, unless we... There are new people here. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
Well, I asked for a presentation regarding this and also for those who have come out to speak about it. So if we can do the presentation, there may be someone who's not familiar with it and then it gives some, hopefully, some clarity as well.
Sure, no, I understand. I was just asking if there was anything new that I might not have noticed different from the last time we saw it.
And it's, you know, it's in a sense new to me as well, so it would definitely...
No, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything that was new. That's all.
Understood.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner, page seven is actually different, the schedule is more in line to today's dates.
Yeah, the content of the presentation is the same, but he's right, the schedule is a little different.
Okay, so that's helpful, thank you.
Please proceed. Thank you. All right, talk about the project goal, project area, preliminary schedule, estimated budget and design elements. So Melrose Park Association is 2,000 home development with a population of over 7,000 people. Melrose Park is one of the newer additions to the city of Fort Lauderdale, it was annexed in 2002. Currently, there is no street light, lighting in the development and the city is proposing to install 720 new FPL LED streetlights. Talking about the history of the project, Neighbor Support Group developed a conceptual design and cost estimate in October of 2015. The project includes 1,387 solar streetlights with an estimated cost of $11 million. On September 15, 2016, an interest survey was mailed out. On November 18, 2016, the project was transferred to Public Works. Public Works developed a few conceptual layouts and cost estimates, including 22-inch poles. Then Public Works installed three retroflex solar lights as part of the pilot program at the cost of $25,129 in 2019. In November of 2020, Public Works received a directive to proceed with opinion to install lights using FPL Streetlight Program where FPL installed the lights and the city was responsible for paying the monthly fees to FPL. City staff and the city consultant worked with Florida Power Light Company and implemented the streetlight project. Public meeting was held on July 28, 2021 to present the project to the neighborhood. Staff submitted LED light in agreement with FPL for approval, however, the resolution was not passed and the project was put on hold. Any questions there so far?
Do you remember why it was put on hold?
I'm sorry?
Why was that put on hold? The neighborhood didn't want it. Well, there was, there was, well, the survey at the time it was taken showed a number of people, a majority of the people that responded wanted the project. Then the neighborhood came to a meeting and neighbors came to the meeting and said they did not want it. So the Commission voted at that time not to move forward with it. Now it's come back to us and the presentation is being made as to why it was originally started and where we want to go with it, if we want to go with it at all. And we have about 20 people who've signed up to speak to see exactly what the, what the temperature of the neighborhood is. Is this District Four? It's three?
It's three, District Three, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Please proceed.
The project goal, this project will provide new street lighting throughout the Melrose Park neighborhood association to enhance the pedestrian and roadway safety. Like I said again, city is planning to use a FPL Streetlighting Program where the streetlighting cost is paid based on established monthly fees. The project area will consist of 720 new streetlights and they're proposed to be installed throughout the entire neighborhood. Preliminary schedule, this is based if a decision is made today or in February, it will be today, I guess. We already completed the layout and photometric drawings that's done by the consultant back a few years back. FPL completed the engineering drawings and draft agreement. So what is left is have a task ordered for the construction of the project to a consultant. It has to be a budget transfer by June of 2023 and an agreement approved and execution between the city of Fort Lauderdale and FPL by August of 2023. And if all this takes place, the installation will start in early 2024 to be completed in early 2025. Estimated budget, the monthly cost is currently estimated by FPL to be $16,839 a month for all the lights. The construction cost for the entire project is 1.9 million and right now we have budget, in the budget, $937,000. So there is a shortage of $1 million. There is no proposed financial impact for the Melrose Park Neighborhood Association for this project, all costs are currently planned to be paid by the city. The agreement will require Commission approval. These are some of the lights, it's the design of the lights, there are eight feet aluminum arms and it has concrete poles that will provide attractive appearance and longevity, lumenes versus wood poles. That is some of the advantages of the side elements is by going LED versus sodium lights, you can replace eight regular lights with one LED light and consume the same amount of energy.
These lights don't turn purple after a while, do they?
Yeah. And these are the best lights that are suited for this type of application. They improve visibility, drivers can see nearby vehicles and surrounded areas and traffic signs better to avoid and save surroundings. So they provide very good lighting. That's another, other design elements is 5,000 lumen lights will allow for more even distribution and fewer poles. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman, did you ask that this be brought forward today? Who asked, why is this brought forward today?
Yes, I did request for it. In conversation with some of the neighbors within Melrose Park, there has been a strong indication that they desire streetlights. So with that request, I asked that the City Manager put it back on the agenda for our discussion. And also, if I may, say hello to my neighbors from the Melrose Park area and I'm glad to see you here today. I want to hear what you have to say as well.
So, anyone have any questions of Omar? I did just, if that's okay, you want to do questions now as opposed to after the topic? Okay, Omar, I just have a question because I know this was an issue when it came back, when it came before us about a year ago, was the look of these poles. So I just wanted to make sure that they haven't changed because when you look at the presentation, if you go back to the, one of the original pages that say new streetlights, Melrose Park, one of the original pictures, I think it's the first, page four of 12? Yes, you just had it, that's it. Now, the lights that you have in your backup are nowhere near looking like these lights, right?
No, no, this, these are solar, these were the solar lights that were done on the pilot.
I'm talking about just even the design of these lights, which seem much more neighborhood friendly than the lights that you're proposing, which seem like lights that you would see on I-95.
Those look more industrial with...
Yeah, like on I-95.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear, that you're still proposing the concrete poles with those aluminum masks, not what we're seeing on this page.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Also, I had requested some information from the City Manager regarding the surveys that were taken before, also the catalog from FPNL for the type of lighting.
Right.
And also the original surveys and the results of those surveys, okay? So that was something that I had requested. And also in regards to the poles that are being suggested by the FPNL packet, is that the standard pack type of lights that are being placed in the city overall? Is it any different from the lights that are being placed in any other city, any other community in the city?
Are they typical? Are these poles typical?
Yeah. Irene is the project manager, you have all the history on that.
Good afternoon, Irene Tocar. Yes, they are smaller, they're not what you think of I-95, it's a fairly small fixture. We actually brought it and showed it to the neighborhood. It's about 20 inches by 10, so it's a fairly small LED light and it's specifically designed for this type of a street, for the smaller street. FPNL does have many other options and we looked at it at the initial stage of a design, but the price is different. Like if you think of more decorative fixtures, like we ran calculation for massive fixture, it's a triple over cost. So it's, they would require like more pedestrians, so what we tried to find something that's street friendly, that on a smaller scale, but when we looked at the decorative fixtures against, the cost was astronomical. And we did find a few locations, we presented at that time where you can see how this fixture looks like.
Vice Mayor, you want to ask a question?
Steve and Dean, you were there, Pam, maybe you could help me. 81% of the neighborhood was in favor of it. What exactly was it that got this poll back then? Why did they not want it? Do you remember what the issue was or...
No, I was not the City Commissioner at the time.
But you might, but you might have had some feedback that we don't have also, or Steve?
Well, the feedback that I was receiving and have been receiving is that the community wants the lights, they feel that the, the community, I have been speaking to, if I can repeat what I was saying, I haven't spoke to any of you, that's why I'm excited this day to hear what you have to say. That's why I'm excited this day to hear what you have to say. But the individuals who I spoke to that live in your community have reached out to me and said they want the lights. Okay? And that's why I'm here today and we're doing this process. So it's not like you're shaking your head no, but people have said that to me.
Vice Mayor. So why don't we start, let's do the public here.
Yes.
But before, what was the issue from you guys? Why did they pull back?
Well, we, there was a lot of, and well, I'm sure we'll hear that, so maybe we should just get to the public. But what was brought to our attention was that the surveys were faulty. There were a lot of issues with the survey itself, how it was done, how it was compiled. All of that was a big issue. And then for me also, again, I just felt that the, the lights, even if we did move forward, were not applicable for this neighborhood aesthetically. I just thought they were really ugly and they don't look anything like what's on the screen here. These are at least attractive and I thought there were way too many lights and I thought that they, the design of the lights was just inappropriate for the, for the character of the neighborhood. That's all. But I'm sure we'll hear from the neighborhood.
But if we could, before you move on, just for what was presented, there was one project that suggested 1,300 lights and this project only has 720. So in argument are you saying there's too many lights? I don't understand that.
Okay. So why don't we hear from the public? Vice Mayor, you have any other questions?
I'm very anxious to hear what they have.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. So you may take your seats, please, and we're going to hear from the public. Thank you so much. Like I said, there's a number of people sign up to speak. I'm going to call your names three at a time. Please be prepared to speak when your name is called. And if you could try to limit your remarks to two minutes, that would be great. Start out with Linda Dawkins, followed by Christopher, whoever lives at 550 East Campus Circle. I can't remember, can't see your last name. And Craig Camp.
Mayor? Hi, Linda. I'm going to ask that my presentation be a little bit longer than your two minutes because I've been living in Melrose Park for 47 years. I used to be president, vice president of Melrose Park Homeowners Association and I know a lot about what happened in Melrose Park.
All right, so why don't you just begin?
Maybe some of the other residents do not know.
So just, so just start your comments and we'll go from there.
Okay. The Melrose Park development is 1,000.
And try to speak in the mic. Try to speak in the mic.
The Melrose Park development is 1,860 homes located in the southwest section of Fort Lauderdale. It was developed in the early 1950s as one of the most exclusive and prestigious neighborhoods in the area, boasting a unique site plan with large lots, beautiful homes and upscale appliances such as Thermador. Lured the most distinguished buyers from all over. During the construction of Melrose Park, streetlights were not installed, but every home was equipped with outside yard lights to provide lighting for the community without the unsightly running of electrical wires needed for streetlights. All utility lines were placed along the backyard easements, thus making for a more pleasing front facade. With 75 years in existence, the neighborhood residents never voted to install streetlights, even after two to three attempts in the past. That's why it's hard to believe the residents have now voted for such a major change in the area. The city representatives proclaimed that the installation of lights would help lower crime in the area, but Melrose Park does not have a high crime rate. For the last several years, our crime rate averaged less than 10 incidents per month in the whole development. That's a point 005% crime rate. How many other comparable developments of this size can achieve this rate? This is a direct correlation of not having streetlights. Most of the crime here occurs in the daytime, not at night. The next reason some say that streetlights are needed is because it's dark and hard to find locations at night. Most streets in Melrose Park are named streets, Iowa, Jackson, Kentucky, Arizona. It's difficult to find addresses in the daytime due to unfamiliarity of the development. This is also a plus for our neighborhood. You can easily get lost here and it would take you years to become familiar with the street names unless you use your GPS on a regular basis. At a monthly homeowners meeting, a city of Fort Lauderdale employee attended and said, "I know you all did not vote for streetlights, but you're going to get them anyway." He made this statement within a few months after the vote. The employee is now deceased, but this information was passed on to the city on several occasions due to his, prior to his demise for further explanation, but no was given. Our former commissioner has never attended a Melrose Park homeowners meeting during his entire tenure, nor did he attend a meeting that he called to present the information to the residents regarding this project. The numbers presented as the vote count are questionable since it took almost a year to present the results, but when they did, it came with a complete FPL plan for the lights. An independent survey company should have been hired to facilitate from beginning to end. I don't think many of the commissioners on this panel know much about our neighborhood, but you will vote to surely cause an increase of crime to our community. If this project is completed and the crime rate skyrockets in the wrong direction, none of you will be in office, leaving us to fend for ourselves with lights that were never requested by the homeowners association but being forced upon us by the city. They told us that we were going to get 722 concrete pole lights that were going to be 22 feet high, but that's not what they put in Melrose Park. They put the solar lights on three different areas in Melrose Park. And some of the residents thought they were being, they were voting for the solar lights, not the concrete pole lights. The survey said that they sent out 1,961 total mailings, but there are only 1,860 homes in Melrose Park. So they surveyed businesses as well as apartments that do not have any business voting for us to pay for in Melrose Park. Then they said that there were 367 yes votes. That's 81% of the amount of votes of the people who responded.
Right.
They said there were 83 no's for unmarked, for a total of 454 responses received. So if you got 367 yeses out of 1,961 mailings, that's 19% of the houses in Melrose Park. Why would you give us 19% telling the homeowners, "We're going to get streetlights based on the 19% of people saying yes in the whole park"? That's not fair. And based on that, I say no.
Okay. Thank you. Did she cover all the bases? No one else needs to speak? Or you still want to speak? Okay. All right, all right, we'll continue. Christopher, how do you pronounce your last name? No, this is, it begins with an S. S-E. Are you, is this 500 East Campus Circle?
No.
Okay. Well, oh, Craig Camp, you're the, okay, this other person is not here then. Okay, very good. Come on up, Craig. Followed by Cheryl Clayton, followed by Etisha.
So I go ahead and start?
Okay. Please go ahead.
First of all, LED lights are not safe. I said, I've read a lot of surveys on it. They flicker over 100 times a second. Now, your eyes don't recognize that. They see it as a solid light, but in reality, your eyes do react to it over a period of time, can cause all kinds of eye problems, macular degeneration, and even worse than that.
Slow down a little bit because it's hard to understand what you're saying. Slow down, we'll give you plenty of time.
All right. I only get two minutes, so. That's not plenty of time.
That's just to scare you.
Okay. Also, we feel that Florida Power and Light is putting out some financial incentive to get this done. Robert McKenzie tried to force this on us and he lied about the survey. It was totally inaccurate. And now he supported Ms. Pittman to get her elected and now he's getting her to push the agenda on us and we don't want it. I've talked to many people in the park and vast majority don't want it.
Mr. Kemp, I would like to say.
Because they have a free pass, one thing they do is they have a free pass to put, to put spy cameras and 5G and we don't want that either. Most people don't want that. 5G is very dangerous. It causes hemoglobin to not match up with your blood and can cause your body to not get enough oxygen. And this has been proven over and over again. Many surveys have shown this. That's about all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kemp, before you take your seat, sir, I would like to say, you said that Mr. McKenzie endorsed me and told me to do this? That's incorrect. I'm a free thinker and when I went out campaigning, individuals told me they wanted lights. So this is not a continuation of Mr. McKenzie. And when you get to know me, you understand that I am a free thinker and I go in the direction of what the community wants. So I look forward to speaking to you more. Thank you.
That's not what everybody else thinks.
Well, that's okay. It doesn't make it right.
All right, Cheryl. Cheryl Clayton. Hi, Cheryl. Followed by.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I am here. My name is Cheryl Clayton. I've lived in Melrose Park for over 20 years. I love where I live and we have a low crime rate. I've never had a problem with crime as long as I've lived there. Here is my presentation to support no lights in Melrose Park. There is no clear scientific evidence that increased outdoor lighting deters crimes. It may make us feel safer, but has not shown to make us safer. Darksky.org, please check them out. A 2015 study published in the Journal of Epidemiology and Community Health found that streetlights don't prevent accidents or crime, but do cost a lot of money. In addition to addressing lighting, crime, and safety, I would also like to address the effect of lights on the ecosystem. Birds, insects, all members of our ecosystem deserve a chance to live. If birds, insects, rodents, and other nightlife does not know whether it's day or night because FPNL has dumped 720 cement poles in Melrose Park, creating a stadium effect, it would affect the ecology of Melrose Park, which is very important to me. I see orioles, I hear woodpeckers, I see owls, I see all kinds of wildlife around Melrose Park, which I, as a homeowner, prefer to see rather than cement poles.
Thank you. Thank you. Christopher Purse, followed by, is it Etisha at 550 East Campus Circle? Okay, Christopher Purse and then Mr. Mohammed. What's at 550 East Campus Circle? Several people put that down as their address. Is that an apartment building? Is that?
No.
Do you have a lot of people living there? What is your name, man?
Altisia.
Oh, okay. There you go.
I'm going to make it short and sweet. We do not want lights in Melrose. Thank you.
Okay.
Ooh, I like that.
Is Christopher Purse here? There's Christopher.
Good afternoon, everyone. I oppose the lights. I was, I live in Melrose Park for over 18 years and the inconsistency of everything I've been hearing from all the meetings does not match up and I oppose on the lights. That's all.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Mohammed, are you here? Followed by Aneed Metellus Thompson, followed by Donna Guthrie.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm just making it short and sweet. I oppose the lights. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Hello.
Good afternoon.
You are?
My name is Aneed Metellus Thompson.
Nice to meet you.
And as a, as a homeowner of nearly 15 years in Melrose Park, I oppose this item as it stands. I don't oppose lights, but I just, I just oppose it as it is. I heard there was a survey that did not come to my mailbox and many of my neighbors on my street did not receive that survey either and they have been homeowners there longer than I have. A true survey of the homeowners in Melrose Park is necessary. Furthermore, it is not in our neighborhood's best interest to have 720 30-foot cement poles in the area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Donna, Donna Guthrie, followed by Yolanda Spence. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Donna Guthrie. So I've been here several times before and.
You keep saying the same thing.
Yes, but my frustration is we thought this was settled. If Commissioner Beasley had brought new ideas, a new survey, we're, everyone, you're right, some people in Melrose Park do want lights. I don't think the majority want lights, but some people do. So do a proper survey, redo the survey, make sure that everybody gets the survey and then we move forward from there. Another thing is, as it stands with the 750 30-foot LED, nobody wants those. When Robert proposed this, when this came years ago, they put in three beta lights, cute, really nice lights. The people that you spoke to that want lights, they thought that's what they were getting because we had a meeting, we called them. I said, "That's not what you're getting." When they hear what is actually going to come into the community, they don't want it. They don't. If, and if, if you do a proper survey, this is how I think it works. You do a proper survey, you get the survey back, you come into the community, you tell us what the survey says, then you have meetings to say, "Hey, how many lights? What type of lights?" Because we live there, you guys don't live there, and as Mrs. Dawkins says, when this is finally there, you guys will no longer be on this commission. So we still have to live with it. So do the proper survey, get the proper lighting in. If that's what is that? I've spoken to people that want light. Nobody wants it in front of their house. They're saying in the intersections, small, cute little lights that you put in, but with, without being, doing the survey, if the survey is flawed, everything else is done. We shouldn't even be here. And we, we assert, and Greg was there on the call, Greg, you were there, which we took it off of the agenda last time because we proved that the survey was incorrect. Why is it back? Why?
If I may? So again, this is a request from Commissioner Beasley Pittman. And we did share with you, Commissioner, some of the survey details via email. Just wanted to confirm you.
I did not get that.
We'll make sure you have that immediately.
Okay. So we, yeah, so Mrs. Pittman, so what you need to do is redo the survey. That's all we're asking. Everybody's saying redo the survey. If the survey says lights, then we get lights, but you can't just force it on us. We don't, we don't want that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Spence, followed by Bevan Pettit, followed by Leslie Williams, followed by Godfrey Johnson.
Good afternoon. My name is Yolanda and I've lived in Melrose Park for 36 years.
Thirty-six years?
Thirty-six. I don't recall receiving one of these surveys and I oppose the lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Bevan Pettit, followed by Leslie Williams, followed by Godfrey Johnson.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. I'm also a resident of Melrose and I've been there, I moved here in 2000, but I owned my property from 95. I've never had a break-in in my house. I've never had a problem particularly on my streets or anything. I know there's GPS today that if somebody's even coming from out of state and they're coming to my house and they got my address, they'll get there. GPS will say you have arrived. So nobody really has a problem. We prefer not to. This is a long-term thing that we want it. Some people want it today. We don't know what the long-term effect's going to be, which is going to be too late. So I'm a no. I don't approve it. I don't want it. I'm. I'm good. And all the things also. It's gone out of my head. But no, I don't approve for the lighting.
Okay. Thank you. Leslie Williams, followed by Godfrey Johnson. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? That's the end of our list? Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor's Commissioner, Mayor Commissioner. My name is Leslie Williams. And I am here to speak against the lights for Melrose Park. The lights as proposed are hideous, as you very eloquently and everyone else who spoke mentioned. They are not neighborhood-friendly. I do remember the survey in 2016. However, at the time, I voted yes. I voted yes to nice lights. Aesthetically pleasing, neighborhood-friendly lights. I don't want my property to look like Walmart or I-95. I've lived in Melrose since 1992. We have a beautiful community. Homes, for the most part, are well-maintained. The people in Melrose Park love the community. And we do not want to look like a Walmart shopping center.
Mr. Johnson, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Godfrey Johnson. Honoring the mayor, Vice Mayor, and all the Commissioners. Truly, I am against lights. I indeed am living in Melrose Park over 31 years. Owned the house over 33 years. And I heard concerning those intersection, I live at the intersection. I don't need no lights. Please on my intersection. But I know people who physically moved in into our neighborhood because we don't have any lights. And I think it would be a disservice for them. To our Commissioner, I'm so glad that you're here. God bless you. I was wishing that we had some folks who would have opposed us, but they are not here. And I wish that you can be a part of our meeting just to communicate. And even those who are opposing, let them come to just discuss because we have our Vice Presi, our President. That we, we've been working, I have been, from the, from the very first year I lived in Melrose Park, I was a treasurer. And I've been there back and forth. And let me tell you facts. We enjoy our monthly meetings. We look forward for it. And we warm open, invite folks to come and discuss issues. And many times, especially this issue, have never been discussed appropriately and properly. And I would love to have it been discussed. I physically walked around just to get our church, Melrose Park Semes of God Church, approved for our community. I came and did all I'm doing here for our church to get that property. So I know what it is to solicit and go about doing things. And I wish that that could be done and done properly. And you have my vote against it. God bless.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this?
One more.
This one.
Did, sir, did you sign up? It's okay. Come on up. Introduce yourself, please.
My name is George Johnson. And I moved to Melrose Park in 1977. I've been there for quite a long time.
That's when it was born, right? When was?
Okay. No, I was born in '38. Okay. And I don't see any reason for the lights to be there because I've never had a problem with birds or anything in the park area. And I'm one of the first blacks that moved in the park area. And so I'm opposed of the lights that have been recommended for coming to the park area. It makes it look like Broward Boulevard. And it's a residential section. So I'm opposed against the lighting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Commissioner Beasley Pittman, what are your thoughts?
Yes. Once again, I want to thank you all from Melrose coming out and sharing your thoughts about this, this agenda item for the streetlights. I hear you clearly asking that we have a meeting, a conversation, having a survey that is, what you say is not flawed. I'm still waiting to see the survey that was presented and the results of it from before. I did not see it in my backup. I requested. Okay.
All right.
All right. But let me, let me say this in continuance to what I was trying to express. Again, I want to be in alignment with what our district want, what us, your community wants, our community. So I will like to ask for that invitation to come to your homeowners' meeting. Also, I'm extending the invitation for you all to attend the pre-agenda meeting that we have usually on the second, excuse me, the third Monday of the month at Riverland Park. We have one at Sunland, excuse me, at Carter Park. I'm aging myself. You know, Carter Park was known as Sunland for decades. Born and raised, you kind of forget when names are changed. However, we send out invitations. And I need to hear from you. We need you in those meetings. The meeting we had at Riverland, the last one or the first one, because of the change in the scheduling with holidays, I didn't see any of you there. And I was hoping to see you. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize. I'm sorry? But the, what it is, there's a commis, there is a pre-agenda meeting. And it's in a general location where we can get the entire district. It's not to say that you're not Melrose or you're not Riverland. We're putting it in a convenient place where everyone in what I'm calling the south end of the district can come and attend. So it's for everyone. So just because it's at Riverland Fire Station, that does not mean that Melrose cannot attend. But what I am excited about and what I'm hearing, I have an opportunity to come to your homeowners' meeting. And I will do that because we need to build a relationship. And that's my desire. Okay? So with everything that's been taken today with the city manager, with those requests that I made earlier, get those in my hand. And we'll start that process to do the surveys to get a more accurate view and a desire of the, of the community of Melrose Park.
Okay. So for today's purposes, then, we'll just sort of leave this on hold until the district commissioner can reconnect with the community and to see what the next steps should be going forward, right?
I, I'm, William. I'm Greg. It seems like a lot of the people out there didn't get the survey or didn't return the survey.
Well, it was done a long time ago.
It was 2016, right?
Seven years ago.
Seven years ago.
So we'll do a new one.
But is there an opportunity, as opposed to just mail, is there another, I mean, in addition to that, is there a way to ensure that it doesn't get lost?
Well, why don't we let the district commissioner work that out?
We'll, we'll work that out. And because, um...
Good idea.
One of my concerns is, as you know, I said every commission meeting, the lack of information being disseminated. We have people in our community that does not necessarily have internet. There are situations where we're not, thank you very much, Alan. Thank you. Where we don't have the opportunity, you may not get it on the back of your water bill, whatever the case may be. Whatever that gap is, it's my responsibility to close that gap so we have communication 100%. And that's what I'm working towards. So yes, we're gonna work towards that to get the information out. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to me.
No, it's important. Thank you, folks, for being here today. And hopefully you can connect with the district commissioner and we'll see what the next steps forward are. Yes, Donna? Wait, you gotta come up here and speak. We can't see your pretty face over there.
Sorry. So my question is, Adam is also on the afternoon agenda. So we don't have to show up at the 6 o'clock because you're gonna put it on hold. You're gonna come back into the community. We're gonna speak and move forward.
Correct.
And, and just an FYI, when the survey is done, we adhere to Broward County's, because, you know, we were grandfathered in. A lot of the codes from Broward County was grandfathered in when we got annexed. So one of the things it's supposed to be when you do a survey is supposed to be 50% plus one of the homeowners, the property owners that pays these taxes, needs to say yes to this.
Okay.
Just to put that out.
Very good.
Um, excuse me, um, attorney, is that still in effect?
Yes, it has to be.
I do not know what...
If we can just get that verified.
So, so let me, because I, so...
I understand what you're talking about with regards to the annex.
So when we were annexed in 2002?
2002.
So a lot of our code and our requirements, we kept from the county. So we know that the city doesn't adhere to them because even when Pastor Johnson put up a fence at his, his church, they required him to put up edging in front of the fence. We, in Melrose Park, we don't have to do that because we're still under grandfathered, under the county's requirements.
So to clarify, Melrose is not grandfathered. What, what the city agreed to do via resolution is to, to adopt a zoning ordinance that maintains the character of the neighborhood. We did so in Section 47-39 of our Unified Land Development Regulations, which is specifically entitled Melrose Park Zoning. So you have a whole zoning section that is special for Melrose Park. But with regards to the other county codes, those are not applicable.
Is that true for Pastor Johnson? Because, because we were grandfathered in. That's what we were told when we were at meetings.
Maybe, you may call it grandfathered in, but there was, the actual process was just adopting a zoning ordinance specific to Melrose so that it adopted the same characteristics that the county had for your neighborhood.
Okay.
And Donna, what are you, what are you referring to when you say that you have to have 50% plus one? What, what, what language is that pertaining to?
So for any changes within our community, we had to, like right now, we need road pavings and lines down the street and everything that the city has neglected overall. So any changes that the, the homeowners had to agree to, we required 50% plus one of the homeowners to say, "Yes, these are the changes that we want."
So can we check that out also, Dwayne? If you could maybe work with Ms. Guthrie on that?
Okay.
Just to find out what she's referring to specifically? Thank you. And then I would just ask city manager, when these surveys eventually happen, and I'm sure Commissioner Beasley Pittman will be looking after this. But it seems that a lot of people were a little bit confused when those surveys went out seven years, thinking that they might get a certain look of a light. For instance, like we had in our document, only to find out that that's not the light. So we have to be really clear so no one's confused, no one's misinformed. Everyone needs to know exactly what the questions are and what the survey is looking to gather in terms of information. But everyone needs to be crystal clear as to what is possibly being proposed so that there's no bait and switch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glassman, for speaking for me. We do want clarity. And being your Commissioner, yes, I'm gonna stand for clarity for you. And I appreciate Mr. Glassman putting it out there. But I, I'm, I'm with you. I'm not against you. I am with Melrose Park. Thank you.
And thank you for that. Because what they did was they put up three beta lights in the community on three different streets. And they put, they, they were nice. And then what was actually on paper was totally different. So we appreciate you for that. Thank you.
And I look forward to speaking with you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, very good. Moving on to Business Four, a discussion, Water Treatment Plant Grant Opportunities Under Review. Who would like to provide information to the city? Thank you all for being here. Hi.
Good afternoon.
So this subject matter came up as, as we passed the water, the new water treatment plant resolution. But at the same time, the, the cost of the, of the project came into question again as to how we're gonna pay for it. And is there a possibility that we might get federal grants under the federal infrastructure bill? And you're here to respond to that. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Daphne Sainville with Government Affairs and Economic Development. I wish the answer was no, but the answer is yes. We can apply for federal funding, assuming that the city maintains ownership of the project and applies for funding. So there was the question about whether or not doing the project as a P-3 would affect our ability to apply for federal grants and stack them. The answer is that it should not affect eligibility. As you know, I don't speak in guarantees because anything is possible with Congress. But note that a private entity undertaking a public works water project through a P-3 could apply directly for a WIFIA, which is the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act loan. So with WIFIA, it's a federal credit program administered by the EPA for eligible water and wastewater infrastructure projects. We are eligible as a local government entity. And the program can fund development and implementation activities for projects that are eligible for the Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund, the projects eligible for the Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund, and a combination of projects secured by a common security pledge or submitted under one application by a revolving loan fund. Other eligible development and implementation activities include construction, reconstruction, rehab, and replacement activities. An important project features with WIFIA is that 20 million is the minimum project size for large communities. 49% is the maximum, maximum portion of eligible project costs that WIFIA can fund. Total federal assistance may not exceed 80% of the project's eligible costs. Projects must be creditworthy and have a dedicated source of revenue. NEPA, Davis Bacon, and the American Iron and Steel Build America, Buy America Act, and all other federal cross-cutter provisions would apply. Another option to fund some portion of building out the water plant is the U.S. Department of Commerce's Economic Development Administration Public Works Grant. It's also known as the Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Program. The focus is on hazard mitigation projects, reducing the risks from disasters and natural, natural hazards. There's about 363.5 million this year, this fiscal year, for the program. The average grant award is 1.4 million with a 50% match requirement. And it, there are rolling applications. Additional information about the EDA Public Works Program is that it provides catalytic investments to help distressed communities build, design, or engineer critical infrastructure and facilities that will help implement regional development. Prior examples of some investments that the EDA has supported through the Public Works Program include projects supporting water and sewer system improvements, industrial parks, high-tech shipping and logistics facilities, et cetera, et cetera. Most of them go to promoting economic growth and job creation, job growth. Another option is the BRIC grant, which is the Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities grant. We can submit an unlimited number of hazard mitigation project sub-applications. Each are valued up to 50 million. Funding is competitive. Funding is competitive. This was the one that Public Works and I looked at and said would be, you know, the most beneficial because of the grant award amount. The process would be that the city submits the application to the state, the state submits that application that we gave to the federal government on behalf of the city, and then we wait to see if we've received it. Another option, which I slightly referred to in the beginning, is the EPA state revolving loans for clean water and drinking water programs. The Florida State Revolving Fund, the SRF, is made up of three programs: Clean Water State Revolving Fund, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, and the State Revolving Fund Management. So both the Clean Water and Drinking Water programs are funded through money received from the federal grants, as well as state contributions. These revolve through repayment of previous loans and interest earned. These two are loan programs. The Clean Water program was created in nineteen eighty-seven through amendments to the Clean Water Act. This fund has over two point five billion available for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Typical funding for projects is about four point eight million. For the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund, Congress appropriates funding, EPA awards the capitalization grant to each state based upon the results of the most recent Drinking Water Infrastructure Needs Survey and Assessment, the state would provide a twenty percent match. It's building on a federal investment of over twenty-one billion, so that could also be an option. Florida Department of Environmental Protection would make the determination whether this pro, the building of the new water plant falls under clean water or drinking water. We believe it would fall under the clean water, but once we put in the application, we would get that determination from meeting with DUP representatives. The last option to get some funding that can be stacked with the P three would be through earmarks. We do know earmarks are back, which are the discretionary funds that come through our relationships with our congressional delegation. We, as a city, are lucky enough to have three representatives, one who may want to give us an earmark with the sweet spot, I would say, the most beneficial funding of maybe five million. It's a small amount, but it goes towards something. So we have either through Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz, Congresswoman Sheila Sherfless McCormick, or from Congressman Jared Moskowitz. And that would be the end. There are three contacts, Courtney with Public Works and Saliman from Public Works as well, as myself are available for questions.
Anyone have any questions of Daphne? Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Business five, discussion of water treatment plant next steps. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, so we're very excited to embark upon this new journey with the water treatment plant. Staff is prepared to talk about the schedule and what we can expect next.
Okay.
While we're waiting on that, so a question, Mayor. So as we're looking at these various funding sources, we're already moving forward with bond issues and things like that. I'm thinking these are conversations we probably should have had before we approved all this. If one of the issues is whether or not we can get funding for this because it's a P three and not a straightforward city project, I would just encourage going forward that we have these funding conversations before we commit to a project delivery method. And, and before we start going down the process of issuing bonds and things like that. It just seems to me that that conversation about paying for something should have been at an earlier stage. That's all. Thank you.
So, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor. So we did have a conversation how we were gonna pay for this. We're just exploring those grant opportunities as a way to even improve our cost efficiency in, in paying the capital projects associated.
I don't, I don't ever recall having a conversation within the last two and a half, three years that we've been in the P three process about pursuing grant opportunities as a primary method of funding the plant. If, if we had those, I missed them.
No, no, they weren't primary methods. Stan Tech actually came and talked about the primary method being the, the, the costs that were gonna be paid by the neighbors.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. I think that's a mistake. We should have been looking for external sources to alleviate the burden on our rate payers at a much earlier stage, because if we've gone down as P three delivery method and it precludes us from asking for federal funding, then I suggest we've missed the boat.
Well, let me respond to that. And, and if that were the case, I would agree with you, but the thing is that this, with the current administration in Washington and, and the new Congress, some of these programs weren't even in effect until recently. And the infrastructure, the infrastructure bills that were passed by Congress, some of those programs, they don't even have the applications ready yet. And it, it, they only became available more recently after we had already gone through the process. To have delayed it anymore, and you're asking us to delay it further, would frustrate the whole effort now of trying to hurry up and get this water treatment plant built. Every day we wait, we are, we are at the mercy of any possible catastrophe that could happen at the Five Ash Plant. I think that the, the philosophy now is that we can still apply for grants, we are not, we're not prevented from applying for grants, nor are we, nor according to Daphne, are we, are we denied the opportunity, even if we are involved in a, in a P three arrangement for some, for some of these, these grant opportunities. So are you suggesting, I hope you're not suggesting that we stop the process of building the plant until such time as we seek out other funding sources? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, Mayor, not so ever, not, not at all. What I'm saying is that these are conversations that we should have been having concurrent with the planning for the water plant. So at, at a point in time, you may recall, we were looking at doing a RFP for a design build. We were looking at a variety of options for P threes. In my mind, the conversation about funding these things would have been appropriate to have been having all along. And I agree with you, Mayor, some of these programs are new. Some of them have been in existence for twenty-plus years. You may recall when we did Waterworks twenty-eleven, we used state revolving loan funds to pay for a significant portion of that program. So some of them are new, some of them have been in place for decades. So again, I just, what I'm saying is, going forward, I encourage staff to discuss funding before we've chosen a vendor, before we've committed ourselves to a construction delivery method. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I just might add, I, but I also wanted to add that I think that we're in a much better position now for grants, because we are, we have the evidence to show the government that we're ready. Exactly. We are, we are what they like to call shovel-ready.
Shovel-ready.
We are, we are much, much better posed to move forward with grant applications, which also, by the way, grant applications take a while in and of themselves. They take a year or two. The cycles are not immediate. So I, I do think that we really needed to move forward, and I think that, again, we're, we're much better positioned now to, to apply for those grants.
Okay, thank you. Alan.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. And, and yes, we are looking very closely at the grants, particularly on the enabling works, that we know there's a lot of opportunities out there. A lot of the infrastructure law is focused on PFAS removal, and so there's opportunities that we're also looking at. The BRIC is probably the, the best opportunity, but that, those are things that we're currently having discussions on, as we're talking about the path forward on how we will be building this plant. So they, they are happening concurrently. So as, where we are right now, as you know, we approved the comprehensive agreement at the last meeting, and it has been executed. We have been in discussions with IDE Ridgewood and their contractor Jacobs to begin doing the water testing out at the, the wellfields. A very important part of finalizing the design and getting through a lot of the permits is doing water sampling, determining exactly what type of raw water that we have, and then adjusting the plan and to accommodate what, what is in there. So that is happening right now, and the first day of testing should be tomorrow, based on the rotational schedule, because we have to make sure that as we're turning wells on and off, that we are not endangering any of the drinking water that's going into the plant, that we're accommodating that within our production plan. We've had a couple meetings already, talking about the enabling works, both with our owner representative Hazen and Sawyer, as well as with the IDE Ridgewood team to start moving forward. And also, we've begun some of the permitting activities, most particular starting to do the preliminary work for the OCCT study, the optimal corrosion control testing and plan, to make sure that the water that is being produced will go safely through the water pipes and not cause any type of impacts.
Alan, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
During the discussion, I heard a number of people say that, you know, why, that the color of the water isn't as a result of the treatment process is because of the bad pipes. Now, those same bad pipes also come from Peel Dixie, don't they?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the water coming from the Peel Dixie side is coming out very clear through those same type of pipes.
Right, okay, thank you. proceed.
One other thing that we received word today, that somewhere around the first of March, the federal government will come out with a draft guidance on PFAS regulation, establishing a proposed standard for what all water plants will have to meet by twenty twenty-six. And it looks like it's gonna be a very, very low, very stringent level. This new plant should be able to accommodate the new regulations that are coming out, whereas we would not meet that with Five Ash. So that is something we should see on March first, and then it goes through a regulatory appeal process, and, and we'll be monitoring that very closely to make sure that the plant is, design is adjusted and fully meets all of the requirements of the new regulations that will be put in place by the end of this year. Right now, they're, we-
Twenty twenty-five is what you said.
The plant will be finished in twenty twenty-
The regulations will hit in twenty twenty-five.
It, it should be approved by the end of this year, and we believe there will be an implementation period to make sure that all plants are able to reduce PFAS levels down to a regulatory thing by twenty twenty-six, based on what is being proposed. We'll, we'll find out on March first exactly what that, the proposed guidance will be. So, and, and the last thing is, we've had meetings with Florida Power and Light already, start talking about the power requirement for the new plant and beginning that part of the project, another one of the enabling works that the city is responsible for. So as we're looking further, a lot of coordination happening right now. Hazen and Sawyer will be doing a task order with them to increase the capacity on their contract, to do the design reviews, and then to be our owner's representative going into the construction. And then hopefully, if we stay on the schedule, we are looking at a groundbreaking sometime in, in probably late May of this year. And the forty-two month clock is already started, but we are doing everything to stay on that schedule as of right now. And while I'll do now, turn it over to Susan Grant, who'll talk over the, the financial part, which is the, the more important part in, in my book.
Thank you, Alan. All important stuff. Susan Grant, Assistant City Manager, Mayor Commission. Thanks for having me today to talk a little bit about the financial piece. So the project financing team has met once. We have a meeting again this Friday. When I say the financing team, that it consists of our financial advisor, PFM, our bond and disclosure councils, our rate consultants, and the finance and treasury team. We received actually yesterday from the project company, the draw schedule for the four hundred and eighty-five million. As you know, the first hundred and twenty-one million comes from them and their equity. And the reason the draw schedule is important, because we are looking at possibly doing a master bond resolution and drawing in two different tranches in this, again, to make sure we have the money when we need it. We're gonna have to do a cost benefit against that, as far as what we think interest rates might do. But overall, what the schedule will include is updating our numbers. We are running about six or seven different scenarios with both a level debt service schedule, a rapid service schedule. We're looking at thirty years, we're looking at forty years, and we're also kind of looking at what it would be to do a very even rate increases, that the rate increases are consistent over the ten-year period. So once we get those from the rate consultants, we have promised the Infrastructure Task Force that we will show those, them the numbers. BAB is interested in the numbers as well, and I think at the joint meeting with the commission and BAB in June, we will review what those results were in July of twenty twenty-three, so this coming July, we'll have to start putting notices in the water bills, letting folks know, we don't have to have the rate increases nailed down at that point, but let them know the dates of the public hearings that we will be considering rate increases. Those will be in July.
And Susan, when you do those notices, may I recommend that instead of doing it in, not just stating the increase in terms of percentage, but also the actual dollar amount? Because when you do percentage, it scares people. It makes people think, I've had, when I go to these neighborhood meetings, people think their bills are gonna go up two to three hundred dollars a, a month. Okay? And we know that's not the case. So in terms of trying to identify, and I've seen it in some other literature that we've done, where we actually did do the, actually, we did the dollar figure, include that in all these notices, so that people understand that it's, it's not that kind of rate increase where there'd be, where rumor has it, that it's gonna go up two to three hundred dollars a month in order to pay for this facility.
So yeah, so the amount of space we have on the water bills is limited, but we can get that out in, in many other ways. So the public hearings for the rates would be in September of twenty twenty-three. We have to have a first and second reading. We'd also, also bring a master bond resolution at that point, and then the rates would be effective in October, and we'd do bond closings. Regarding some of those grant opportunities, we are looking at WIFIA financing as part of the overall program, and may be able to get some lower interest rates as a result of that. We're usually using some WIFIA funding right now for the stormwater bonds that we're about to issue. So I, again, we're not leaving any stone unturned as it relates to the rates and the impact on those rate payers.
Okay.
And happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Susan? There being none, thank you.
Thank you.
Does that complete your presentation?
It does.
Great. Okay, so now we go to city commission reports. Commissioner Herbst.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things that I want to bring up. We've had two meetings with the Inter Miami team, talking about what's going on up at Lockhart, and I just want to give you a quick update on that. There are four issues that we are working on with the team up there. First has to do with their request that the city fund their cost of demolition for the existing stadiums that were up there, with their estimating at roughly six million dollars.
Six million? Is that the number?
Six million, yes. The second is, they're asking the city to pay for their building permits, which is roughly one point three million dollars. Third issue that we're dealing with up there is the construction of the park. And the fourth issue is their need for ongoing parking until such time as their Miami facility is completed.
Can I ask you a question? Wasn't the building permit issue being considered as a set off against the demolition cost?
That's their request, but that's not what the agreements are. So we've gone back, Greg and I, and we've had consult, a consultation with Dewane, and we've looked at the interim city agreement and the comprehensive agreement. And the interim comprehensive agreement is the one that deals with demolition, and in it, it says that demolition is a responsibility of Inter Miami. And in the comprehensive agreement, it says that they're responsible for permits. So the roughly, I'll call it seven and a half million dollars that they're asking the city to contribute is things that we are not obligated for under the two agreements that we have with Inter Miami.
All right, so, so I hear what you're saying, and I actually read those agreements again, and then I also consulted with, with Chris Lagerblum and to try to find out what his understanding was. His understanding was, and he says that you were part of these conversations, Commissioner, that there, there were agreements or were understandings that the city was going to be responsible for the cost of demolition, and that there would be a, a discussion regarding using the building permit cost as a set off against that. So maybe, we maybe need to bring this as, at a commission agenda item, so that we can bring the parties here and have a full discussion, and so that we can bring some closure to this issue, because at some point, we need to figure out how we're moving forward, because we do want the park, we do want to accommodate parking, and we do have to bring these issues to some point where everybody understands what we agreed to and what we didn't agree to.
So that's a very good point, Mayor. So there was nothing that was ever agreed to. What, there were conversations that were being held between Inter Miami and the city manager. Nothing was brought to the commission for a vote. So there, and, and all these are subsequent to the actual signed agreements that we have. So, so we've entered into agreements with all parties represented by council, and now what we have is a proposal to basically rework what was agreed to and signed off by. Again, that's a policy decision for the commission to make, but let me, let me deal with some of the other things that you, that you also brought up, because I think they're important, too. So for the past several years, Inter Miami has been utilizing the park space for parking. That's something that we can't allow to continue, because we'll never get the park completed if we continue to use it for the next four years as a parking lot. And so that's not an acceptable solution long term.
I think we all agree on that.
Right. So, so that's, that's one of the issues that we're trying to work on. I have had conversations with Rufus to see if we could accommodate them on some of the airport property. Those conversations are still ongoing, and we haven't gotten an answer back yet. Hopefully, we'll get that. And, and then the issue with respect to the building permit fees is this is something that's been open for several years as well, and we need to get that one resolved. And again, offset is not really something we can do. So if we're going to pay the building permit fees on behalf of Inter Miami, that's gonna require a transfer from the general fund to do that. So it's not really an offset. It's a, that's a transfer from the general fund to the building permit fund in order to do that.
Okay. Well, I, so Greg, we should probably, if we're gonna have a, we should have a full discussion regarding this. I want to bring Mr. Lagerblum into this conversation. He did agree to come to one of our meetings if, if necessary, because I want to be fair to us, and I want to be fair to the other parties, and see exactly what was agreed to.
But again, Mayor, that's, I think that's important, though. Nothing was agreed to, because nothing came to the commission. So the, the city manager, neither, and I, and I explained this to Inter Miami when I met with them. The city manager, be it Greg, or be it Chris, or myself even leading the negotiations with them, can't bind the city to anything. So there, and, and again, I stress this point with them several times, is they did not have an agreement with the city. They had an understanding that the city manager would bring this to the city commission for a vote. So I think we need to distinguish between those two things. There was no agreement. The only agreement we have is the agreement that we signed, the agreement that we voted on. that we signed, the agreement that we voted on.
I, and the, the only agreement that we have is the agreement that we sign. But there is, there's some opinion that within the language itself, and again, I didn't, I didn't prepare the language, we just voted on it. But within the, within the agreement itself, there's, there's some, Mr. Lagerblum has indicated to me that certain language in the agreement alludes to the the type of arrangement that 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 he has described to us. So, I'm not disputing what you're saying.
Sure.
But I think, I think for the fairness of everyone here on the commission, we should hear all points of view, and then we can make a decision. But, but clearly, we need to make a decision.
Well, we do, because right now, and and this is why there is a degree of urgency with this, because they don't have parking for their upcoming game, for example, for this weekend.
Well, they have parking. I mean-
They don't, no, they don't. They only have parking at the FAU lot. They do not have parking, as I understand it, on the city's park.
So what's our arrangement? What has been our arrangement, Greg, as far as that's concerned?
So, I, I just want to bring to the table that because Commissioner Herbst has been appointed to negotiate by you all.
Right.
He's asked that the South Lot not be used by Inter Miami for any of the games.
Well, we can't do that.
Sure we can.
Why?
Because, so, so Mayor, what what I have asked Inter Miami to do is, I said, in a spirit of cooperation, I said, I am happy to move forward with giving you extensions on parking in return for something. So I haven't gotten anything from Inter Miami in terms of a willingness to move forward on the things that they are obligated to do under the existing agreement, such as build a park. And so they've made no progress yet. And I've asked them, show a demonstration of good faith that you are moving forward on the other obligations that you have under the agreement. And so we need something. So the only, the only leverage we have in order to move this issue forward is parking. And I'm more than willing to extend parking in exchange for something, but I'm not giving up the only leverage that we have without getting something in return.
Well, first of all, that's a draconian mess effort, and I don't think that the city should in any way be a party to something like that. We're not going to, we're not going to to stop their season, and we're not going to interfere with their, with the business arrangement they have by, by trying to, you know, leverage that point, that position in order to gain some advantage, especially since there's some, there's some dispute as to some of the issues that we've just discussed. So, in all fairness to them, as well as in fairness to our community, we should at least be able to bring the parties together. And whether it's the first game, the third game, or the fifth game that plays there, there's, the leverage still exists there. So I don't think we should shut down their season, but we should at least be able to allow them to come here and allow Mr. Lagerblum to come here and allow all the parties connected to this issue to come together and have an open and fair discussion. And, and I think, I, I mean, I'd hope the commission would agree to that.
So in negotiating, we call that negotiating against yourself. So you're not, you're not assisting me in terms of negotiating with, with a party that we have an-
Come on, these people, these people have built a stadium in our city, spent $170 million in our city, and now you want to shut them down? I mean, what kind of, what kind of people are we?
No, I want my park. I want my park in my district, sir.
Well, you, first of all, it's not your park, and it's not, it's the city's park. And it, you know, it's what the city decides. It's not just what you decide. And, and this has been an issue for a number of years, mainly because the site plan regarding that those 20 acres has continued to evolve.
The site plan was done in June 21. I'm using the same plate, site plan from June of 2021. So it's, it's 2023. That site plan is a year and a half old. I think we need to move forward with it.
Yes, but there, but your predecessor has had asked that site plan be modified from time to time, and we respected her, her, her point of view. And now you're, you've taken her place, and now you want to go back to what the original site plan is. Fine, we'll discuss that. But keep in mind, it wasn't because of any delinquency on their part, but it was because of the changing conditions and changing points of view.
I, I believe, I believe that that site plan was-
We talked about a skate park. We talked about, now we're talking about all kinds of-
Esports.
Yeah, esports.
But they weren't building any of that. So just, just so we're clear, the part that they were building is not that. That's the part that we're building out of parks bonds. So they're not building the esports facility. That's not what they're responsible for. What they're responsible for-
No, but they were, but they were contemplating that. They were contemplating that and participating with us in order to to help fund the effort.
They weren't going to fund that portion. That part is not covered under the comprehensive agreement.
In, in the discussions I was having with them, they were trying to find ways to help us, help the city fund some of the projects that we wanted to do on that site.
When, when I spoke with them, when I-
Wait a minute. In addition, in addition, there was also discussion at, at least a year ago, that they were going to enhance some of the, the football fields, facilities that they created. They were going to add more seating. They were going to add a scoreboard. They were going to do all these other things. And I understand they're still prepared to do that. Those are the kinds of things that we work together as we partner with, with a, with a group like this that has made a significant investment in our city. And again, I don't really feel, I, I, I see that you're bringing a report to the commission, but in all fairness to these folks and to the people of our community, I think we need to have a fair and open discussion with all parties here present. Right now, it's unfair to, to make decisions without all parties being present. And I think that at the next meeting, or if you want to have a special meeting, we can do that. But to hold something over their head, like we're not going to let them start their season, I mean, that's, that's really not qualified. That's not qualified.
So, Mayor, they have actually not expressed a willingness to add the seats to the stadium, which, by the way, were in the stadium that were torn down. So we had 3,000 seats in the stadium, and they've only got 1,500 bleacher seats right now. So I asked them if they would restore the stadium back to the condition in terms of amenities that we had, which is an announcer's booth, the sound system, and 3,000 seats. That was not something they brought to us. That's something I was asking them for. So they hadn't agreed. They did not put that on a table. They did not offer that. So I really want to be clear about that, that this is what I asked them to do. And, and let's remember who plays there, by the way. It's Stranahan High School, and it's Fort Lauderdale High School. So these, these are things that they're doing for the city as a whole, and I shared that with them. And I said, as a goodwill gesture, I think it would be great if you would be willing to restore the level of, of stadium that we had there that you tore down.
These high schools never had stadiums. That was the whole point of their adding this to the project. Those two high schools never had stadiums. It's the first time they had a stadium made available to themselves exclusively for their use. And so when you say to restore what was there, there was a, there was a baseball stadium there, and it was, it was-
And there was a football stadium there. There was a baseball stadium, a football stadium. There's always been a football stadium. That goes back to the 50s.
And they were unusable because we had left them in, we had left them to deteriorate and to fall into disrepair. And then these folks came to us and said, hey, we're going to build a beautiful sporting facility for, for not just soccer, but for the foot, football stadiums for the two, for the two high schools. And the point is that, you know, I don't quite get why this approach you feel is effective, but I think in the end, we're trying to be good partners in moving forward in this project. And I think in all fairness to them, we need to have them here. We need to have Mr. Lagerblum here, and we need to have, allow this commission to be able to make a decision based on a full understanding of what all the agreements were going forward. And I, and I, and I feel really, it's inappropriate for us to be making decision regarding anything until all the parties are here. And had, had I known you were going to bring this up, I would have invited all those folks to come here. They probably were prepared to make, make a presentation. I don't know about Mr. Lagerblum. I haven't talked to him, you know, about his availability. But I think perhaps at the next meeting, we should be able to make this a, a conference agenda item and let everyone have a, a full understanding of what's going forward. And then, and then if the commission agrees that, you know, we need to follow your, your point of view, we can still do that.
So then, I think that's probably a great idea, Mayor, is to bring everybody together. That was actually the purpose of me trying to negotiate with them, was to come to an agreement. And actually, I think we're making progress on it. And we had another meeting scheduled for this week because we were trying to make sure that we met all of our deadlines. So I've been negotiating with them in good faith. We've been working as a-
Good job.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So I, I think bringing everybody together so they could hear the expression of the will of the entire commission is not a bad idea. So I think in the meantime, then, if we're going to give direction to the city manager, it would be my recommendation that we don't agree to more than one month of parking, that this needs to be basically on a month by month tied to deliverables. I'm not, I'm not of the opinion that giving them three months or six months of continued parking on what is supposed to be the park is in the best interest of the district. And so I'd like to say, if we're going to do this, we need to have a very short deadline to encourage everybody to come to the table. And if the commission's will is to pull $7 million away from funding other projects and put it towards this, then so be it. But we need to be able to come to that determination rather quickly.
I, I don't, the $6 million number seems to be a little rich. I don't know if it really is that high. I think there's, I think it's less than that. But is that the number?
That's, that's their estimation. Personally, I don't think demolition for that building was more than $1 to $2 million.
Okay, so we need to get firmer numbers on that. And I think, I think that in my previous discussions before, I, I had stopped talking, you know, I had stopped becoming the, the intermediary. The number was a little bit less than that. So, anyway, let's, let's, let's do it that way, then. We'll move forward and try to get them at our next meeting if possible, okay?
Mayor, I just need a little bit of clarification, though, because I just want to make sure what I heard, I think what I thought I heard. Because I, I think I heard from Commissioner Herbst, and please explain, that we were telling them they have no parking for their Saturday home opener?
They have parking. For the, they have parking, yes.
But I thought he was saying that they don't.
Said, let's, 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 let's continue the arrangement for another month. And, and then, in the meantime, we'll have our conversation with them.
So, so there's, there's two, there's two parking areas. One is the FAU lot.
Right.
Okay. And the other one is the park itself. So, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong. They have an agreement to park at the FAU lot through the 28th. Is that correct?
Correct. I'm sorry, through what? Through what?
28th of February.
Okay.
Okay. They also have a temporary certificate of occupancy, which is only good up until the 28th either, because they haven't paid the building permit fees, which is tied to their TCO.
Right.
So without payment of the building permit fees, we're continuing to renew a TCO. And, and, and let me raise a larger issue when we consider the building permit fees. There are a number of P3s that we've done that would probably want us to also waive building permit fees. For example, the Panthers at War Memorial, Sun Tech's at the La Solis Marina, any one of these P3s that we've done where they're all paying their building permit fees, I would suggest becomes a little challenging for us if we're going to say to one particular P3, we're going to pay your building permit fees. But all these other folks are going to want their building permit fees.
No, no, I, I would never vote to waive building permit fees.
Okay, good. I'm, I'm glad we're on the same page, because that-
No, no, I'm not. But the only reason why that came up in that context of using the word waive was as a set off against the demolition costs. We're not waiving the fees. It was just a way for the city to help pay for its obligation for the demolition. I think that's the only context in which that was ever raised.
No, I understand. But my point is, I just, I want to make sure that the entire commission weighs in if we're going to say, you cannot park here.
And that's, and that's why I want to bring it up at the next conference.
Right. I don't want, right. I just want to make sure that we're all in on this as a, as a, as a commission. In other words, that that's not a unilateral decision of anyone to say, you can't park on this side or you can't park on that side. That's all. Thank you.
So where's our consensus, then? I'd like to hear from my other commissioners.
In regards to this, I'm, I'm really taken back at the, the delay with the building of the park. I don't understand what the delay with that. And trying to understand, moving forward, what options do we have? How do we push Inter Miami to move forward, to move forward beyond the delay? What Commissioner Hurst is saying, I believe, may light a fire, have a conversation, at least have the conversation at this point. I'm not saying implement it, but let's have that conversation.
Right.
To see how we could, you know, like you said, bring everyone together.
Exactly.
Have the conversation, and then see how we can move to implement something that will make them move. But I, I, I'd like that to put some fire. Let's move.
Okay, so, so let's have it on the, let's put it on the conference agenda for the next meeting.
Hello?
I'm sorry. Is there, yes.
It's my turn.
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I like what I'm hearing from, from you guys. A couple of things. From what I gather, I did speak to the representative. It sounds like in good faith, they are going to be doubling the number of bleachers to 3,000. They're going to put a sound system in. They're going to put a press box. I believe they're going to even put a flagpole. I think that was the other thing they were, I'm not sure about that. And in good faith, Mr. Mayor, John, I, I think it is a good thing not to delay opening day. That could be catastrophic, to give them a little breathing room so we could discuss this. I think it's a very good, good idea. I think that's, that's good faith on their part. Thank you.
Okay.
So both lots will be available this Saturday for their opener?
Just want to confirm.
Excuse me?
Just want to confirm. We're all, I have consensus?
Yes.
For, for this Saturday?
Yes. And actually, you said a month, so-
For the month, for the month.
Okay, for the month. All right, thank you.
That gives us time in which to meet in that, in the conference meeting will be within that month's time.
Thank you.
All right. Anything further?
I'm just getting warmed up. So, so, so let me bring up another one that's actually a little more positive. How about that? So, so obviously, cleaning up, cleaning up old problems is, is always going to be a little more challenging than creating new ones. So let's create a new one. So I had, I had dinner with Shane Strum several weeks back, and he expressed a desire for Broward General to be able to find a new location for some type of an emergency room facility east of the intercoastal. And so I proposed that we take a look at the Beach Community Center, where I've got a very large parking lot out there that we were looking at trying to create some sort of park amenity for the neighborhood. But I suggested that the neighborhood really isn't strongly in favor of the various iterations we proposed for that. And what they were going to do was build a structure over the parking lot and then create a park on the roof of the parking lot. So this never really got a lot of traction with the neighborhood, understandably. But what I suggested to Shane is that he could build his, I think he's talking roughly a 12-bed emergency facility at the beach, which could be like a, you know, initial stabilization triage for folks having heart attacks and strokes, and then put parking on top of it. So we don't, we have no net loss of parking, because my shop's over there on 33rd Street. They need some of that parking. So we have no net loss in parking, but we might be able to get the first hospital back on the beach since Cleveland Clinic closed down over a decade ago. That was the only place that had the hyperbaric chamber, you may remember. That's now the Sapphire, where I believe Commissioner Glassman lives. So I think this is an amazing opportunity for us to partner with Broward Health. They'll build the building. We'll provide the land. We'll do it like we've done with our other not-for-profit arrangements, governmental arrangements. And, and I think this is an amazing, amazing opportunity to get, you know, first-class health care at the beach again, where we desperately need it, particularly for a lot of my residents up in the Galt and Bermuda River area, that are a little older, and, and would benefit from having that service close to them. You know, as we know, time from, from when you call somebody for a stroke or a heart attack to when they begin receiving treatment is critical in survivability. So just want to bring that up for you. We're going to be continuing these conversations, and hopefully, this is something that everybody can support.
So I, I've been part of, I've been hearing that discussion happening, and just want to ask a couple of questions of you. So, would this facility be put on the parking space that we now have next to the community center? Or would it be, would we take down the community center and build the emergency center there? What is, tell me again, the logistics-
So we've got, we've got multiple parking areas over there. One is actually bisected by a street. So what we're talking about doing is leaving the community center in place.
Right.
The parking directly in front of the community center would stay there. This would be the secondary parking just to the south of that. We could vacate the street in the middle. We can create one large site and put it on that.
And there's enough, the, the footprint is sufficient to be, to be, that land will compensate it?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And then, like I said, and then, and then they would go ahead and put parking on the second floor. Or if, you know, if it's more than one floor, I don't know that it needs to be necessarily. But if it's three floors, it'll incorporate parking into the site.
Well, whatever we can do to put an emergency facility on the beach, because it's been lacking for over a dozen years.
Right.
We've been looking for opportunities. Now that Mr. Strum has made this recommendation and brought it to the city.
Yeah. And I believe he's got capital dollars to help put this into effect.
Right, which is great. So whatever we can do, so continue to move forward. Greg, continue to work with the commissioner and see how we can bring this forward. Because it's always been a nightmare for all those folks that live on the beach, especially we have a large senior population on the beach, and the need is that much greater. So this, when I heard about this, it was really, like, it was wonderful news. So, great. Thank you.
Do you want a, a physician's point of view on that?
Yes.
Or you want me to wait for my turn at the end?
Dr. Sturman, please weigh in. The expert opinion is much, much appreciated.
You for or against?
Oh, 100% for. They used to have the hospital. That was gone. Right at that site across the street, there was a physician that I used to work for, had an actual office there, and it was booming because there was nothing else on the beach.
Right.
I spoke to Shane about that a few times, and I think it's a fantastic idea. Things like Tortuga, when fire rescue has- Things like Tortuga, when fire rescue has to pull somebody off of there, they can't go 17th Street, they have an opportunity to stabilize somebody there. Somebody with a major medical emergency could go to that facility. They could stabilize them, do a direct admit, maybe even bypass the ER. And it's a win-win, 100% win-win. I support it 100%.
Thank you.
Does that complete your comments?
Yes, it does. I like, I like to go out on a high note, okay?
Very good.
Kumbaya.
They're both high notes. Hey, we, everyone wants to see this, that part of the city's property by the airport developed. It's, you know, it's just, you know, we, we'll get there. So, and we'll get there. And in the end, it'll be a great place for everybody to enjoy. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Thank you. I'm just going to give some comments of things I want to discuss. I don't want to go into my, where I've been this, this last two weeks. I would like for us, again, still regarding the resolution to our governor and along with the Florida Department of Education, that resolution to rescind or reject the AP. African Studies course. I would like for us to, we tabled it basically the last time.
Well, last, last time we, we tabled it because it was an issue in transition. And the College Board agreed to water down the, the course if they, you know, in order, in order to compromise with the governor. And, and so we kind of, so take it from there. What, what are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are, I believe that this is the time to make the resolution. I don't believe we need to wait for after the fact, whatever we are agreeing to put in resolution. I believe it is the time to do so. Points that we definitely could make is about the College Board itself being a solid reputation, where they have been creating well-researched about the AP classes. So they are, they're fully capable of making that decision. Also, that the courses are designed to give our high school students rigorous studies in preparation for college. We know that these classes are optional, so there's no reason, in a sense, to, you know, dismiss the opportunity. And then also, there's other courses that relating to culture that's been created and acceptable, that are suitable, that are deemed suitable by the governor as well. So let's make our statement, what we, how we would like to move forward, making our statement of what we stand on and how we support these classes.
So what exactly would, what exactly would you want the resolution to state that we support? Because we don't support, I personally don't support the College Board's decision to water down the course.
Exactly.
But at the same time.
Yeah, I don't think they have.
I think they decided they were not going to water it down.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's still in transition. So what, what, how would we want to phrase the resolution? Because in, in Miramar, Mayor Messom told me that they, their, their resolution essentially said that they wanted the governor to reverse the decision on the AP course. But I think ours has to go deeper than just saying that. I think we need to make a statement regarding the whole subject matter without making reference necessarily to what the College Board is doing and so forth.
Definitely rescinding the rejection. You know, we need to make that statement. We want to see a rescind, that the statement is rescinded.
So Mr. Spence, you want to take a stab at that while we're, while we're in recess?
Yeah, sure. Mayor, if I could also add, I sent something to the city manager today on this, because I'm, I'm totally supportive of what Commissioner Beasley-Pitman is saying. I believe the same. At today's county commission meeting, they had a resolution for this, for academic freedom. I, I think that we could easily combine what the county did today and with what the city of Miramar did. We were all, David sent us all the city of Miramar's resolution.
I got the Miramar one. I didn't get the county one.
The county was just today. They did a.
Fresh off the press here?
Fresh, this is fresh off the press. But basically, they supported the principle of academic freedom and opposing all legislative and executive attempts to erode or diminish academic freedom in public education, et cetera, et cetera. And then they went on to expound on some of that. But they did that today.
Can you give that to Mr. Spence?
I, I sent it, well, yeah, and I, I think I emailed you more backup. You want all the, there's a lot of backup for this too.
But I, I think it has to be a little deeper than that. I think it has to be, we have to make specific reference to the marginalized groups that the governor is trying to erase from the teaching process, including African Studies, LGBT, LGBT Studies, all these, all these groups that are being bullied in, in one form or another. I, I don't know. I mean, that's just my opinion, but I, I don't think it has enough weight if it's just a general, I mean, the very specific topic was African Studies, right? What was the other one that they wanted to, wasn't there, weren't there two AP courses? Was it African Studies? What was the other one?
Daphne, can you remind us what were the two courses?
The latest issue was African American Studies.
The main one was African Studies, right? Was it African American or Africa?
African American.
African American, okay.
Studies. That's the AP course.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Daphne Saintville, Government Affairs, Economic Development. So I believe it was just the AP African American Studies that came into question with the College Board, and it's still being reviewed. I will opine and recommend that we are extremely careful in the manner that we write the resolution, because it is a very sensitive subject, I know on both sides. But we want to maintain some type of political leverage during session, because we have a series of policies and appropriations within our legislative program that I want to, you know, come out successful on.
I, I was, I hear what you're saying, Daphne, but we have to stand on this.
And I understand.
And I believe that we can prepare a resolution that hit our points, drive our points home. And then it is understood where we stand. And.
All right. So, Duane, why don't you take a stab at it and see what we come up with?
So just for clarity, Duane, the, um, the, the resolution with regards to the AP African American.
Studies.
Studies course is, is directed to the Department of Education, urging them to rescind their disapproval of the College Board's advanced placement African American Studies program, whereas the Broward County resolution is a general statement with regards to the support of the principles of academic freedom. But it doesn't care to be directed.
Academic freedom unfortunately has been used as a phrase for both sides. Both sides have used that phrase. They've said academic freedom means freedom from having to be subject to woke philosophies. And, and so that's, I'm, I'm leery of using that phrase.
But if you read more detail about, do you have the actual, I have something proposed here. Do you have that one? I, I might have not given you everything, but I think, Mayor, there's a way to combine what Commissioner Beasley-Pitman wants to achieve with what you want to achieve in terms of making the language as strong as possible.
I dumped it on Mr. Spence.
Yes, and I think, I think if you combine the county and the city of Miramar, you get there. You, you get there with making that statement and supporting the College Board.
Okay.
I have a question. Mr. Spence said that he's asking who are we addressing it to? Did I hear that? Is it, I'm urging that it goes to the Florida Department of Education and the governor.
So it's, it's clear now with the, that I have the proposed resolution for today, county, that they direct their statement to the governor, the Board of Education, the Commissioner of Education, the State Board of Education Chair, and each member of the State Board of Education, and the members of the Broward Legislative Delegation.
That covers it.
Yeah.
But again, it.
Yes. So that's, that's my urge.
But I understand. We'll, we'll attempt to combine them.
I think you also should even add, you know, the Senate President, the, the House leadership, just so everyone.
Speaker?
Yeah. All of the, all of the House and Senate leadership is, in addition to the Broward Legislative Delegation.
Okay.
And concluded with that, my other item for discussion, I wanted to discuss the possibility of pursuing federal grants that pertain to gun violence. I want to be able to have Daphne to pursue those type of grants.
Grants that pertain to gun violence?
Yes. Anything. To see what's there, what we could do as to generating funds to combat those type of recurring incidence education symposium that will give exposure to how to avoid gun violence. Anything that can, you know, we can draw those funds in to put into place conversations to end gun violence as much as possible.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Greg, I'm sorry. Also, I had this document that you might want for Mr. Spence as well. It's from College Board, Our Commitment to AP African American Studies, the scholars in the field. And then also, this document from the Urban Libraries Council. I think this is really helpful as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, a lot of meetings in District 2. Wednesday, the 8th, Sable Bend Civic Association meeting, the 9th. It was a pleasure to attend the groundbreaking of the addition on 551 Bay Shore. Mayor, you were there as well. And then I checked out the Kimpton Shorebreak. That hotel has been rebranded just a few blocks away for the rooftop and restaurant openings. Great crowd, a lot of excitement in that part of the central, actually North Beach Village. Friday, February 10th, it was a pleasure to join the mayor and Commissioner Herbst at the dedication of the progress flag at Sebastian and A1A. That was followed the next day with the Pride of the Americas Parade, and it was an honor to serve as one of the grand marshals. So thank you to the organizers for that. Wednesday, February 15th, the Solid Waste Working Group reconvened. Also that night, Flag River Civic Association and Mayor. Again, we were both at the Arthur Marcus City Hall exhibit, which is right outside. If folks haven't had a chance to take a look at it, those are some images from his book, The Architecture of Whimsy: Mid-20th Century Modern Architecture in South Florida, which is the architecture that we are known for. Thursday, February 16th, I attended a really good session over at the Forum for the Pulse of Fat Village, where we heard from representatives from the development team, and also Heinz Development about the project that we're going to see on the six acres along the railroad tracks a few blocks from here, north of here. That's an exciting project that will really transform that area. And then, again, it was a pleasure to join the mayor and Commissioner Beasley-Pitman that afternoon for the groundbreaking of the DC Alexander Park, a project that's been in the making for more than a decade. So I'm thrilled that that is starting. And then we all had such a good time, the entire commission present with staff. Great job on Neighbor Support Night. I would also mention that coming up, tomorrow is the 113th Annual Chamber Meeting Luncheon at the Signature Grand from the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce. Also tomorrow evening, Middle River Terrace Neighborhood Association. Thursday, Regional Economic Development Luncheon, put on by the Marine Industries Association of South Florida. They have a great lineup of speakers. I'll also be attending Thursday evening, the Idaho Wild Improvement Association meeting. I'm going to let the mayor handle the Central Beach Alliance meeting all by yourself for Thursday evening. We don't want to get involved in any sunshine issues. Tuesday, the 28th.
Like old times, though.
It will be like old times. They forgot what you look like, so it's going to be really nice that you're there. Tuesday, February 28th, the South Middle River Civic Association meeting. And also, coming up a little bit later, but before our next meeting, Monday, March 6th, the ULA, the ULI and the DDA are presenting a really interesting symposium, their annual Fort Lauderdale Focus on Real Estate Investment in Our City, that will be on the beach as well at the Four Seasons Hotel. A couple of comments that I just wanted to make, Mayor, and I think I had a few slides that I wanted to show. And I, I bring this up because I really hope city manager with staff, that you'll be able to work on more incentives for folks that own historically designated properties in our city. And I'm specifically thinking of tax incentives. We recently have lost, for those of you that don't know, Francis Abreu was probably one of our most well-known architects from about 100 years ago. He's known for most of the incredible Mediterranean structures you might see around town, including the Cafe Casa Blanca on the beach, which was our first actual residence on the beach. We've lost very recently both the Anheuser-Busch estate called Mangariva at 1,000 Riviera Isles. Do we have a photos, some photos of that? This was an amazing estate, an incredible point lot on the water, right at the end of Riviera Isles. Again, this was built for the, for the Bush dynasty, Anheuser-Busch. And it was an amazing, amazing structure. We have some more of those, I think. And then even most recently, this property was completed in 1938. And really, an incredible 9,700-square-foot mansion on the water, again, designed by Francis Abreu. But we, we're losing that now. It's being demolished. You can just go through these really quickly. I just have a couple of these. There you go, back in the day.
They tore that down?
Yes. Yes. This is, this is that estate from 1938. We have to do a better job of protecting significant structures like this. We have to. We have to, we have to offer incentives to people so that we don't lose this built history in our city. These are amazing structures. And then this is a different structure that also has been demolished. The Towers Apartments, although it was designated, it ran into a lot of trouble getting redone because of its deteriorated condition. Again, if we had incentives in place, this is on, just so you know, this is the Tower Apartments Hotel that was built in, I believe it was 1925, yes, 824 Southeast 2nd Street. This is just, just north of La Solis Boulevard. Again, this is probably one of his largest structures that he constructed in Fort Lauderdale. It was quite the place in its day. People paid an astronomical amount of money to stay at this hotel, and many of them had apartments in that. It's a shame that we've also.
Did we designate this historic?
We did designate it, but then it ran into so many issues where, and trust me, I tried really hard to find differing opinions. But as the developer was going through the process of trying to renovate this structure, they kept coming up with the opinion that it was going to all just fall apart, that it was just going to all go down because of the walls and the conditions and the materials that were used in the structure. So trust me, there were so many, so many opinions rendered, and every single one came back saying that we cannot. So the Historic Preservation Board actually did grant a certificate of approval for demolition, and that has been demolished.
So there's no incentive we could have provided here. This was just, this was something that just needed to be torn down.
But again, I'm, I'm not going to get into the weeds, but I'm just saying it's just another example of over time, because the, remember, the previous owner did fight the designation.
This was demolition by neglect, as far as I'm concerned.
Right. But my point being is that if we did have more incentives in place, going back in time, the previous owner, instead of, you know, battling the designation, might have been able to, earlier, before we got to the point of no return, might have been able to do something if incentives were in place. So I, again, I bring it up as an example, just of a, a very well-known architect in our city whose, whose work is disappearing. Again, I just am asking that maybe we really start looking at, as our building, I'm sorry, as our buildings age and as our city grows older, it will be more important. I would love for us to be able to do something for the folks that live in Sable Bend. That's a historic district. It's our only residential historic district in the city of Fort Lauderdale. We should be extending to these folks a thank you, and also a means by which they can preserve those structures, because it's, it's no cheap, it's no cheap feat preserving historical structure.
As you know, many years ago, I proposed that we implement a transfer of development rights program into our city building code, and has been, it's fallen on deaf ears in our building department. They refuse to, to even propose something that works very well in some of the other communities. That's the incentive that we need to do, especially in a growing community like ours, where development rights are very, very important, and the incentives are, are very much. where development rights are very, very important, and the incentives are very much a part of how we can try to shape the, the future of our city as well as preserving the past, so.
But I think we, I think we did
Chris, you want to respond to that?
I think we did initiate a transfer development rights program, Mayor. We actually did that.
Where? So, we do. We have a transfer development rights program for any designated landmark in the city. The only limitation isn't where you can transfer from, it's where you can transfer to. So, you can't like transfer to the beach, for instance, but you could transfer from the beach to another site, and we offer height and also density as
And who is, who is taking advantage of that?
Well, it's a very market-driven program, so it's based on private transactions and the availability of other ways for them to achieve height and density, so as those opportunities become available, then, you know, the expectation is that program will become more viable.
But also, the average homeowner in Sable Bend, or any owner of a historic property, they might not want to take advantage of a transfer development rights ordinance, because it's not what they're looking to do. It's, they're not looking to do that kind of a development anywhere. They, they just need some help, you know?
But you can sell, you can sell your development rights, and thereby, that's the incentive to keep your historic property, and at the same time, the purchaser is able to now develop greater than what the zoning ordinarily would allow, so
But do we want that in a neighborhood like Sable Bend? Do we want zoning greater?
No, 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 no. You're not understanding what I'm saying. Right, exactly, exactly. The development rights are transferred to another part of the city.
Well, exactly.
Yes, well, yes, we do, because let's say, for example, someone sells their development rights, they own a property in Sable Bend, and instead of tearing it down, they have development rights that they could transfer to a developer that wants to build a Flag River Village, or that wants to build south of the river. I mean, these are development rights that are definitely practical, usable, and transferable.
It's a tough educational sell, though, to make people even aware of how that works to, to assist them with just maybe getting a tax break on their historically designated home. I just think that we can simplify it for owners of, of historic properties or potentially designated historic property. I'm just thinking we could do more, that's all.
I'll leave that up to you.
We can, and I'll leave that up
And in your district, I'll
And I'll leave it up to the City Manager.
I have a question. Is there a composed list of these type of properties where the city, we are able to watch and make sure, especially like the one that you were showing the image of?
Good question.
That was demolition? Is there any tracking where we could be advised beforehand? And is there anything that the city can do to step in to maybe get ownership? How does that work?
So, Commissioner, we do have a historic preservation website that includes all individually designated landmarks as well of our, as well as our historic districts. Additionally, we've been in the process of doing architectural resource surveys throughout the city. We haven't covered the entire city yet, but we've done about 12 neighborhoods, and what we do with that is that survey identifies structures that could be potentially considered for individual landmark designation or district designation. And so, if a development proposal comes in for one of those properties, we send a memo to the commission, letting them know that one of these properties identified, as I just stated, is being proposed for redevelopment, so that the commission or other groups that are interested in taking some sort of action to potentially designate them and save them can do so in a timely manner.
Thank you.
And I think also, even with, with regard to the, to the Riviera Isles property, something like that, there has to be a mechanism where if we're going to see a 10,000 square foot 1938 Francis Abreu home get demolished, or an application for demolition, there has to be a way that we can discuss that before that demolition happens. Because, I mean, some properties
As Commissioner said, have there been properties identified that will, that will trigger the process without our having to find out about it after the fact? Like, do we have specific historic assets that, that, you know, that have already been identified? I thought we, I thought we went through the process of doing that. Didn't we, didn't we create a map?
We did. If it's, if it's designated, we have a map, and then we also map out the surveys. That neighborhood hadn't been surveyed yet. There was an effort, a couple of years ago, a group came forward with some thoughts about designating that structure itself, and, and didn't follow through on it for whatever reason, though it never became, it never came before the Board of Commission.
We have to identify these properties in advance and, and, and let that trigger the, the mechanism of trying to implement a transfer of development rights opportunity. Otherwise, we found out, we find out about it after the fact. I'm sure they're building two or three mega houses on that site, right?
Sure. But again, I think that we do need to just work a little bit harder as our build, as our city ages, to figure out what it is that we want to preserve for future generations, so that our built history is somehow represented through every different type of architecture that we saw since the city was incorporated. So, thank you very much for that, Greg, and for Chris.
Can I, one more thing. You gave me a great opportunity to plug an upcoming conference item that we're going to try to get on the agenda in April. So, through a grant from the state, the city undertook a strategic plan for historic preservation. A lot of outreach went into that, a lot of involvement from the community, and we're going to present that to the commission at a conference meeting in April. It's a great opportunity to have that conversation again, and then use that to kind of, you know, jettison us onto this path of, of coming up with some of these incentives and programs for preserving our, our history here in Fort Lauderdale. So, again, that should come back in April. It's been to the Historic Preservation Board, other boards and groups, and so we're ready to bring that to the commission and share that with you. Great timing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before you said, for the transfer rights, you're talking about, like, instead of doubling a unit, you're going to be transferring it to downtown, and you're, instead of adding like one word, two houses, they'll add like another 200 or something? I mean, not in a
So, for an example, let's say Stranahan House, right? The site that it's on, the zoning district it's in, has a lot more potential than, than what the Stranahan House itself is. So, that has development rights that it's not going to use. The idea behind it is that they can quantify that density or height, and then sell that through a private transaction, a real estate transaction, to somebody else to use that in their project, to help them achieve what they want to achieve on another site.
The houses you were talking about are just like doubling it, like adding a second or third unit, they're not, they're not a whole, two or three floors on a whole building downtown.
I don't, I don't know how the equation works. I've never, I guess I've never had a tutorial on, on our development rights ordinance, but what it does is, in, in general, it allows you to sell rights to a developer, thereby giving the incentive for you not to tear down your historic property, and therefore, that developer is able to use those development rights to either add height or add a density to an area that wouldn't otherwise be allowed to do that. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. And just one last thing, City Manager, I know that I've asked for this before, but I don't think I've gotten it, and if I did, I apologize, but I know the Charter Revision Board has already met once, and I think several of us have asked for that list of topics that was being kept for the last several years. Whenever we brought up an item for the last four years or so, we asked that that be brought up, but do we, has anyone found that list?
I have received the, the list from the former city attorney. I'll have that sent to you for this evening's meeting.
Great, and will that be able to get to all of the members of the Charter Revision Board prior to their March meeting?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. That's it for me, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
I'm going to follow what Steve did. I usually don't do this, but what I've done this past weekend, I actually, my daughter came in from out of town on Saturday. We had the opportunity to go hear one of her sorority sisters perform in Miami-Dade, and I want to say this to the city and to the people who work here and live here, having spent time in Dade County on I-95 and spent time in Miami, makes me appreciate living in Fort Lauderdale that much more.
Well, this was not the weekend to be in Miami. There's so many events.
We do have, we have problems, but let me tell you something. We, I do love this community. Okay, couple little, very couple of quick tidbits. Something coming up later on today, I just want to do a shout out and thank them. The agreement that was going to be a park spaces, a park-like, that was worked out with the Department of Transportation. I want to thank Greg and everybody that worked on getting that wording out there that actually worked out in our favor. Thank you. We, I want to thank everybody who showed up this week at my, talking about the Town Hall on La Solas, La Solas Mobility, the plan's going to be coming up for a grant later on today also, but everybody who participated, over 100 people, including in-person and online, and I encourage you to continue to be involved. I want to thank the city attorney, DeWayne, for two things, your tutorial on P3s, as well as what we did with, comparing us with vacation rentals. And one other thing that was brought up in my district is issues relating to, you know, with construction, some of these mega construction projects and traffic, how we could address that. I've already spoken to Greg and DeWayne about maybe having parking plans like they do downtown on some of the major, major construction in the residential areas, and that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman, you wanted to add one more thing?
Yes, I'm still getting used to this opportunity to share. I wanted to invite the city, the commission, to the Cisdrunk Festival and the Parade and Festival on this Saturday. The event starts with a 5K run. It will begin at
I'll be skipping that.
You're skipping that.
What time does that start? Seven or something?
7:00 AM.
Yeah.
And I've been saying for years, I was going to get in there and run in the 5K, and my husband and I said, this was the year, but it's not the year. It's not the year. It does start at 7:00 AM at Delvee Park. The parade itself starts at 9:00 AM at 19th Avenue, going down to 10th Avenue. And we have a festival that will begin at 10, 11-ish. We have a wonderful lineup of entertainment. The Flyers are circulating, and I'm, I'm really excited about this legacy and signature event being open again. You know, pandemic had us all in a place, and the community is excited to come out and participate. And again, I'm inviting the commission, if you are available, to come out and take that walk with us. We lead out at 9:00 AM.
We'll be there at 9:00.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, just got a, one more thing I want to add. On behalf of Riverwalk, we had the chili cookout this weekend, I forgot to mention this, and the winners were Company 29 from Fort Lauderdale Firefighters, second place was Riverwalk Fire and Water, and best decorated was the art of chili sponsored by La Solas Capital Arts.
Great. Congratulations to that.
I can know where to go get some good chili then.
I tried to make it there, but I can't, couldn't have done, couldn't do it this year. I had a number of events that I attended, but just the most important thing, I do want to remind everybody about the Cisdrunk Parade and, and Fair this weekend. It's a, it's a great opportunity for everyone to come and experience part of our multicultural environment that we have here in Fort Lauderdale, and, and every time I've come, it's really been a great event. There are a couple of openings. We have a new restaurant opening, Moxie's, in the, in the Styles Building downtown. That's the, the, what's it called? The main building. And also, on March 4th, Runway to the Cure at FXC, starting at 6:00 PM. We invite everybody in the community, and certainly everyone in the commission, to participate in that event. Again, it's March 4th at 6:00 PM. And finally, I'll be speaking at a conference, the U.S. Conference of Mayors Climate Summit at 8:30 AM at the Lowe's in Coral Gables. I've been asked to be part of a panel discussion on, on, on climate change. Other than that, I think we're, we're good, and any further comments, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, sure, I have a few things. So, per our prior conversation about Inter Miami, just wanted to leave for the record that the Inter Miami TCO is till March 12th, that they have the extension till. And also, we appreciate the commission authorizing the parking, because Police Department advised it was a public safety concern with the volume that was anticipated. Additionally, just wanted to note that in 1995, Dr. Bob Nelson created Employee Appreciation Day. So, on March 3rd, we are going to commemorate that and follow that tradition, and we will be celebrating this day to celebrate our employees, and we will be having a lunch for our amazing staff in the north part of our city hall, and it's a simple way to say thank you for all that they do, so please join us. We'll have some tacos and some food and snacks, and we'd love to have you there.
Last year, you had hot dogs.
That was Public Works, right. Yes, additionally, we're very excited about the Cisdrunk Festival. We have some amazing performers, like Case, Cut Close, like Commissioner Beasley-Pitman advised. Just wanted to let you know, as we confirmed with the city commission, we just wanted to report that there have been an additional $7,500 in incurred, anticipated, anticipated, not incurred, anticipated expenditures. However, since we had some savings in a prior events, we're forwarding that, we're forwarding that, those savings, and to use those in this event, so that this event can be impactful, and always staying under budget within what we approve, we received approval for, by the city commission, for our fiscal year budget. Upcoming conferences, I will be attending the Alliance Leadership Conference in San Diego from March 11th through March 16th, looking at learning from what housing and homeless programs are being used in San Diego, going with the alliance, and learning more also how businesses collaborate with government as well. I will also be attending the National League of Cities Conference in DC from March 24th to 29th, to also acquire additional opportunities for learning, and also see how we can improve our administration and support for city services. And on Thursday, March 9th, I have been invited to speak for key talks, to talk about city and development, how administration supports that, and those conclude our comments. Thank you for coming to Neighbor Support Night.
Mr. Spence, do you have any report?
No, sir, just the closed door.
Okay, great. So, the city commission conference meeting for today is now concluded, and now we'd like to begin our executive closed-door session. At this time, the city commission shall meet privately to conduct discussions between the city manager, the city attorney, and the city commission relative to pending litigation pursuant to Section 286.011, Prensa 8, Florida statutes in connection with the following matter. Anthony Ewell versus the city of Fort Lauderdale at all. Present at the attorney-client session will be myself, Vice Mayor Warren Sturman, Commissioner John Herbst, Commissioner Stephen Glassman, Commissioner Pam Beasley-Pitman, City Manager Greg Cheveria, interim city attorney DeWayne Spence, outside counsel Michael Burke, and certified court reporter from Bailey and Tin Court Reporting. The estimated length of the attorney-client session is approximately 20 minutes.